Welcome to the City Council's April 13th regular City Council meeting. This is a teleconference meeting with City Council, city staff and members of the public participating remotely to ensure proper social distancing in this federal state and local emergency. Hello, my name is Drew Combs. I'm mayor for Menlo Park for 2021. I would like to introduce staff and city council members present. Vice Mayor Betsy Nash, City Council Members Ray Mueller, Cecilia Taylor and Jen Wilson. Staff present include City Manager Starla Jerome Robinson, City Attorney Narra Doherty, and City Clerk Judy Heron. City Clerk Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs, and again echoing a welcome to our April 13th City Council meeting. Thank you all who have joined. The City Council did have a closed session at 5 o'clock. So we are just now starting our regular meeting. For members of the City Council, we do ask that you remain on the screen for the duration of the meeting, engaging your own webcams and microphones. Staff will engage their webcams and microphones to make presentations as well as respond to any City Council questions. For members of the public who wish to provide public comment, after the mayor calls for public comment on that item, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine and that will raise your virtual hand. As a friendly reminder, we are in the middle of our annual recruitment for advisory bodies. Please connect with me, Judy Heron, the City Clerk. Any staff liaison for any of our advisory bodies for more information or an application. That does conclude my introduction and Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Heron. With that, we'll, I'll ask if there are any informational items that anyone wants to pull for discussion. And so these are items L1, L2, L3, or L4. Vice Mayor Nash.
Thank you. I have short comments on L1, L2, and L3.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Those are exactly the ones I had comments on as well.
And Councilmember Wilson.
I'll finish it out with L4.
I was waiting for someone to come in there so we can do the full sweep. Okay, so, so there, there is going to be commentary from council on all of the informational items. And just, you know, as a, to inform the public, we, we, we ask that because the meetings can go long and that gives a heads up to the staff who are responsible or the POCs for their, those items that, yes, they do have to stay to the end of the meeting. So, sorry. Okay, with that, we'll, we'll move on to agenda, agenda item G1 under study session. Study sessions are an opportunity for city staff to introduce an item that will require policy direction from the council in the near future. City staff will provide a brief presentation. I will then call for public comment. After public comment, the City Council will discuss the matter interactively with staff. The City Council will not take an action on items addressed in study sessions. City Council may provide direction to city staff for preparation of additional analysis or information necessary when the item returns to the City Council for action. So G1 is a direction on the draft 2021 Urban Water Management Plan and Draft Water Storage Contingency Plan. Here to introduce the item is Assistant Public Works Director Chris Lam.
Good evening, councilmembers, vice mayor and mayor. I am Chris Lam, Assistant Public Works Director. And if you give me just a moment here to pull up my presentation, we'll get this started. Judy, there should be a few other presenters that will need to be promoted to, to also assist in the, in the presentation material. So Nicole Santoula, Anona Dutton, and Tina Wong. If you could please promote them, I would appreciate that.
Real quick, Chris, can you repeat those names for me?
So it's Nicole Santoula, so I see her, Anona Dutton, and Tina Wong.
Thank you.
So just confirming that everyone can see my screen currently.
Sure can. Thanks, Chris.
Great. So tonight's, tonight's item is a study session. It is on the, the Menlo Municipal, Menlo Park Municipal Water 2020 Urban Water Management Plan. So I will be giving primarily some introductions to, to other speakers on, on the topics tonight. So like I mentioned, we have Nicole Santoula, the CEO and General Manager of Basca, and Anona Dutton and Tina Wong from EKI who are helping us to prepare the city's urban water management plan. So just for the, the agenda tonight, I will, I will give a, a very brief reminder of, of kind of the, the scope of Menlo Park Municipal Water. And then Nicole will, will cover kind of the SFPUC and Basca's role and, and the, and the, the latest hot topic, the supply reliability data that's provided by SFPUC regarding the Bay Delta Plan. Anona and Tina will cover the Urban Water Management Plan, which goes over projected water demands, projected water supply and reliability, and the updated water shortage contingency plan, which is another document that needs to be approved later this, in the next couple of months, as, along with the Urban Water Management Plan. And then I will pop back on to, to go over the kind of the timeline for all of this. So in terms of the direction that we're looking for tonight, we're looking for confirmation that, from the council, that the staff should include the SFPUC's supply reliability data with, with the Bay Delta Plan in our Urban Water Management Plan. We're also looking to confirm the inclusion of Basca's drought cutbacks across all agencies. So this is, we, we, we have a agreements in place for, for cutbacks up to 20%. But the, the supply reliability data from, from SFPUC is, is requiring us to go, to go much higher than that and which you will, you will see in the presentation here. We'd also like to confirm the scheduling of the public hearing for the Urban Water Management Plan and the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. So we had, we had originally planned to do those on May 25th. They, 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 they need to be done by, by July 1st in order to stay in, essentially in good standing with the State Water Resources Control Board. But we do have a couple of meetings in June if we want to provide some additional time for the public to be able to review the document. So again, the, this is my, my one, one slide reminder of, for, for the, for the public that's watching and for council, the, the Menlo Park Municipal Water primarily serves two, two zones in Menlo Park. We have an upper zone and a lower zone. We purchase 100% of our water from SFPUC. We have approximately 4,400 service connections and we have a supply guarantee from SFPUC of, of 4.4 million gallons per day in non-drought conditions. So with that, I will hand over to Nicole to, to take us through some slides and Nicole, just, just let me know when you want me to advance them and I will, I will do so.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. I'm pleased to be here today to speak with you about the Bay Delta Plan. So first, just to introduce you to Basca, you know, we are a special district representing the interests of the 26 water suppliers in San Mateo, Santa Clara, and Alameda County that rely upon the San Francisco Regional Water System. That includes your city. And collectively, these water suppliers deliver water to 1.8 million residents and over 40,000 businesses and community organizations in these three counties. And the service area is depicted by these different colored service area maps on the right. Next slide, please. This is a list of Basca's member agencies for you. The red dot is where we're at or where you're sitting at tonight in Menlo Park. It's important and a way to think about it is Basca essentially covers almost the entirety of San Mateo County with a few exceptions. Of course, some of those exceptions are in your backyard with the two private utilities on your eastern border. And then a portion of Santa Clara County and a southern portion of Alameda County. Next slide. Like I mentioned, these agencies all rely upon the San Francisco Hachachei Regional Water System that spans the entire width of the state of California with the majority of our supply, 85% of it coming from the Tooluma River watershed. And it is impounded behind O'Shaughnessy Dam that is in Yosemite National Park. And then the water comes across the width of California by gravity and to the Bay Area and then up the peninsula. And in essence, the Basca agencies really represent the path of those pipelines and San Francisco sold water over the years from the very beginning as they built the system and the water supply was available for everybody. Next slide, please. So I'm here tonight to talk to you about a new state regulation that we are dealing with that results in significant water supply impacts to the San Francisco Regional Water System. The State Water Resources Control Board is the entity in California that establishes water quality objectives to protect the beneficial uses of water throughout the state. But in particular, what we're dealing with is the Bay Delta estuary. The plan that they've adopted is called the Water Quality Control Plan for the San Francisco Bay Sacramento San Joaquin Delta Estuary. It's a Phase 1 document, so we call it the Bay Delta Plan. And it really deals with primarily the San Joaquin River side of the Bay Delta System, in particular the Tooluma River. In 2009, the state board actually initiated this plan development, which was really an update of the current regulations that impacts the Tooluma River. They adopted the plan in December 2018 after a significant period of public input and comment. In that adopted plan, the state board actually recognized that their adopted plan had significant impacts and would be difficult to implement given the anticipated results of it. And they included an encouragement for parties to bring back a framework for voluntary agreements that would meet or exceed the proposed objectives of the plan to protect fish and wildlife. So they anticipated the idea of voluntary agreements as an alternative to the adopted Bay Delta Plan at the time. The adopted plan requires significantly increased flows on the Tooluma River. And it results in significant water supply impacts to all the customers that rely upon the regional water system, both San Francisco retail customers who purchase about a third of the water or use about a third of the water that the system develops, and the Basca member agencies who use about two-thirds of the water supply. Next slide, please. So just to give you a picture of this Bay Delta watershed, this is a, basically a map of central to northern California. The rivers up north flowing south, those are the considered the San Joaquin, the Sacramento area rivers, they're the Phase 2 plan of the Bay Delta Plan. We're in the southern end coming out of the San Joaquin side. This is the Phase 1 section of the plan and including the Tooluma River, which I mentioned, supplies 85% of the water that's delivered by the San Francisco Regional Water System. Next slide. This is a timeline that I've put together for the Bay Delta Water Quality Control Plan Development. You know, in water, things take a very long time to make it from one step to another. And we often forget about how it started and the steps that we took in the intervening process. So this has been helpful to kind of walk through, and I won't speak to all the points, but I'm going to call out a few of them because I think they're useful. As I mentioned, in 2009 is when this update started. And in fact, the state board released the first draft in 2013, which it promptly withdrew following significant public comment on it about the adequacy of that environmental document because essentially that's what these drafts are coming out is an environmental document for the plan. They released what was called the Revised Draft Plan in 2016. And then the stakeholders spent from that time till 2018 in comments and separate negotiations on a potential voluntary agreement. Essentially, as soon as the state board put it out, it was clear that this idea of a voluntary agreement would be very important. And then Governor Brown appointed Interior Secretary Bruce Babbitt to initiate negotiations among stakeholders to try to come up with voluntary agreement. Those negotiations have gone through fits and starts throughout that entire process, not resulting in a resolution yet, to be sure. In 2017, through the public review process, Basca submitted comments on the draft plan identifying the significant water supply impacts to all the Basca member agencies from the plan as proposed at that time. Basca agencies also submitted similar comments. And in those comments, we actually spoke to exactly the impacts that you're seeing in your urban water management plan tonight. Those impacts have not changed from that time. So the final plan was adopted in 2018. And shortly thereafter, a series of lawsuits were filed. Governor Newsom also, as he came on board, re-initiated the discussions for voluntary agreement, really again recognizing, as the state board did, that a voluntary agreement that brings the stakeholders together has a greater opportunity for success on the river in meeting the objectives of protecting the environment as well as bringing all the parties together in something that is sustainable. Basca did intervene in a lawsuit in order to protect the interest of the water customers that rely upon the system. The voluntary agreement discussions have continued. And most recently at this point, they have been again re-initiated with discussions between the state and the federal agencies with the changeover of the federal administration. So we're continuing to support this process as we see the voluntary agreements being really the best path forward. Next slide, please. So what does the Bay Delta Plan require exactly? It requires that 40% of the unimpaired flow on the Tooluma River be released every year, regardless of the hydrologic conditions, so wet or dry, into the lower Tooluma River from February to June. And to put that into context for what goes on in the river, since 1971, the February to June releases have averaged 32% of unimpaired flow, meaning, you know, they've come close to that number. But what we have is a huge range. The Tooluma River is, is, is like many California rivers that are unanimous in that it has, you know, significant periods of dry spells and then significant periods of very high flows. And of course, we're seeing these changes even more dramatically today with the impacts of climate change. So averages are a very tough number when you start talking about putting an average down a river and what that means for a lot of things. As, and the PUC, you know, certainly has its obligations to protect the environmental values and the benefits of the resources that it relies upon and it operates systems on. So we've really relied upon them as the experts for the fishery benefits and the analysis of that. They have expressed serious doubts about the Tooluma River ecosystem benefits from the state board's plan. The state board did not rely upon the over 200 studies that have been performed on the Tooluma River since the early 1990s that are really specific to the river and understanding what's going on with the fish in that stream. And also, the state board's plan does not reflect the actual river conditions of the specific issues for the Tooluma River that need to be addressed in order to provide the desired ecosystem benefits. So the concern is that the state board plan might actually not achieve its objectives as it's now adopted. Next slide, please. So what are the impacts that we've been talking about? Kind of the easy way to think about it is if you go back and remember the most recent drought, you know, unfortunately, we're in dry conditions again. But if you think back a couple of years to the most recent drought, when this region did a phenomenal job of reducing its use to roughly, they reduced by 26% as a region. From that level of demand, we would need to reduce our use 20 to 30% more. Right? And again, that was an important number because that was when the state board adopted this plan. So 20 to 30% more than the highest level of rationing that we've ever achieved recently. Or if you look at regular demands, so non-COVID type water demands, we would need to reduce water 40 to 50% during multiple dry years. The other thing that's important is that the number of dry year shortages would essentially double or triple depending upon the, how high the demand level is. So instead of having rationing events every one out of 10 years, you would have it double or triple, two out of 10 years or three out of 10 years on average over the historical hydrology. Next slide, please. So what has gone on when we looked at these impacts is that San Francisco has gotten together with the Modesto and the Turlock Irrigation Districts who operate the major reservoir actually downstream of Hachachei on the river, the reservoir that actually is the, kind of the governing flood control reservoir on the Tooluma River. And, and they have put together a proposal called the Tooluma River Voluntary Agreement that is supported by the scientific studies that have been performed on that river. And those studies have been performed because the districts actually have a license to operate a hydropower facility on New Don Pedro. So these studies have all been done under the oversight of the federal government over the last, since the 1990s as part of the dam and federal energy relicensing. Together, the PUC and the wholesale customers and the districts have actually spent $25 million on these studies in the last, just the last five years. And they really provide significant information that they've used to develop the Tooluma River voluntary agreement. And, and the proposal on the table, it includes a combination of, of actions. So it's a portfolio of measures to improve the river ecosystem and increase the natural population of salmon. So it has what are called functional flows. So instead of saying a flat 40% of unimpaired flow, it says, well, what, what's going on in the river that we're trying to improve? What is the limiting factor in the river so that we can target our water most effectively and creating the better benefit that we want to get out of it? So that's a functional flow. Restoring habitat, because that's certainly one of the critical areas on the Tooluma River. It's a river that's been, you know, impacted by gravel, mining, you know, different ag development up to the areas, stuff like that. So floodplain restoration, reducing predator and managing aquatic weeds and, and better management of habitat. So combined, all these things together are what's in the voluntary agreement that we believe and San Francisco believes will, will achieve the objectives of the Bay Delta Plan while managing the impact on water supply. Next slide. And as I mentioned, you know, these voluntary negotiation, voluntary agreement negotiations are ongoing right now under the direction and leadership of Governor Newsom. He's tasked his Secretary of Natural Resources and Secretary Calipia to lead these negotiations, really focusing on actually not just a voluntary agreement for the Tooluma or for the San Joaquin River, Rivers, but a, what's called a global voluntary agreement for that entire group of rivers that come into the Bay Delta and the exports that go out of it. There was really little to no progress on those talks in this last year, certainly during the COVID and period before that. But they have been recently re-initiated, which is a great sign. So Basca continues its direct efforts in support of having the TRVA really analyzed by the state board as an alternative to the adopted Bay Delta Plan. So if you think about it, the state board is proposing a project and adopted a project and ended an environmental document for that. What we're suggesting is that they are the appropriate agency to analyze an alternative to the adopted plan to see if it meets their objectives and provides less impacts. And they're really the appropriate state agency to do that. The concern is that in the absence of really a settlement, we're going to continue to have unproductive litigation and we'll all remain at risk and the environment will certainly not that, get better and it will likely suffer. Next slide. So just in summary, kind of letting you know where we're at and what Basca is doing really to secure water supply reliability for the customers, the water customers that we represent. You know, we're regularly reporting to the Basca Board, the member agencies actively engaged in that conversation, engaging with the state board and others, obviously providing formal comments where they're appropriate and intervening in litigation in order to really just protect the interests of the water customers. In addition though, we're really doing advocacy, going about trying to say, hey, can we settle this through these voluntary agreements? And how can we, you know, support their analysis by the state board and what resources and support can we put to that? And that's with our state and local elected officials, engaging with water customers and others. And then, kind of at the end of the day, no matter what happens, San Francisco has an obligation to all of you. They have a contract with you, they have a perpetual obligation to provide you a certain amount of water. So the other thing that I'm doing fairly regularly is reminding the PUC of its contractual and legal water supply obligations to all of you. At our urging, the PUC has initiated a new alternative water supply planning program to develop new sources of water to meet its obligations. So either in, in the event that the Bay Delta Plan gets implemented to try to fill that gap, or even when a voluntary agreement gets implemented, it will also have a water cost with it, so to fill the water supply gap with that as well. And we supported a $288 million allocation in the PUC's current tenure CIP for these studies. And also that they now regularly report on these on a quarterly basis to their commission, again, to make sure the public is aware of it and we can track and ensure their progress. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Nicole. And from here, we'll move on to a presentation from Anona and Tina on the, on the Urban Water Management Plan. So similar, if you just let me know when to advance, I will, I will do so.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers and mayor for having us here this evening. Thank you, Nicole, for giving us that really thorough and detailed big picture. What Tina and I are going to do today is sort of bring it home. What does this all mean exactly to Menlo Park and what is being projected in your 2020 Urban Water Management Plan? So I'm Anona Dutton, I'm Vice President and Director of Water Resources at EKI. And Tina Wong, my colleague, is a project manager on this project. She and I worked together with city staff to develop your 2015 Urban Water Management Plan. And so we're pleased to be back working with you on this one, although the news isn't quite as good. So I'm going to turn it over to Tina. She's going to walk through at a high level some of the key findings and then we will both be available to respond to any questions.
Good evening. My name is Tina Wong, Community Council Members and Mayor. Today I'll be going over three major components of the Urban Water Management Plan, starting with the water demand for the city service area, looking at the 20-year planning horizon, the water supply and reliability outlook based on what information that Nicole just presented, and also the updated water shortage contingency plan, addressing the city's actions to be taken during a dry year to address, to temporary reviews, water demands. Next slide, please. So here on the slide, on the chart on the right-hand side, it shows current and projected water demand within the SUDI's service area from 2020 to 2040. This chart also divides the demand into potable water demand and recycled waters demand. The potable is shown in blue and the recycle portion is shown in purple. So currently, as of 2020, the city uses a little over 1,100 billion gallons over a year, and it will increase by 36% by 2040 to approximately 1,500 million gallons over a year. The projections, these projections account for future population employment growth, which is consistent with the general plan update, connect Menlo and also conservation savings. To put it in perspective, residential capita demand is approximately 55 gallons per day per capita over this planning period. As you can see, the city currently uses some of recycled water specifically, it is provided to the Shering Heights Gulf and Country Club by West Bay Center Period District. And notably, this recycled water demand and supply will increase in 2030 as West Bay is planning to provide recycled water to the Bayfront area. By 2040, this recycled water is projected to provide about 8% of the city's total demand. Next slide, please. As you know, on the potable side, the city is 100% relying on the San Francisco Regional Water System. Water System. And as part of this 2020 Urban Water Management Plan Analysis, San Francisco provided multiple reliability projections under the Bay Delta Plan scenario. However, as Nicole mentioned, there is a contractual level service, level surface goals by San Francisco, and none of those mirrors meet the contractual level surface goals, particularly in the dry year, as the goals present limiting rationing to a maximum 20% system-wide reduction in water service during extended droughts. So therefore, there is currently no prescribed method to allocate water to wholesale agencies for those shortages greater than 20%. And just for the purpose of planning the Urban Water Management Plans, BOSTCA has provided us information assuming equal percentage cutbacks across all of the wholesale agencies. And this, it has to acknowledge that if there is an actual shortage over the regional water system greater than 20%, the member agencies will have the opportunity to negotiate and agree upon a more nuanced and equitable approach, for example, considering health and safety needs. Next slide, please. So using that information provided to us by San Francisco and BOSTCA, the next two slides will show a comparison of supply and demands for the city service area specifically. It is projected that supplies are sufficient to meet the city's normal year projected demands, which the city has a threshold in the visual supply guarantee of 4.456 million gallons per day from San Francisco, and San Francisco is projected to meet all of that guaranteed during normal years. And in addition, recycled water is projected to supply approximately 48 million gallons by 2025 and increase to 120 million gallons by 2030. Currently, the city is bringing a line, a groundwater well. However, the current plan is to utilize that well for emergency or critical conditions only. Next slide, please. However, a major shortfall are anticipated in dry years based on that information. These two charts shows the city's supply and demand comparison in single dry years or multiple dry years. The black line here shows the projected demands that we've shown in the graphs earlier. The bar charts, the red portion is the projected reliability during dry years provided us by San Francisco and BOSTCA. The purple portion on top provides the city's recycled water demand and supply projections. And as you can see on the gaps in those years, there is a consistent shortfall projected in these dry years throughout the planning horizon. In the single dry years, shortfall is anticipated to be 28% by 2040. And during the multiple dry years, it could be up to 44% during the multiple dry years. As you can see, the recycled water projections provides a good advantage of mitigating these shortage and just because absent of recycled water, the single dry year supply shortage is anticipated to be 37% by 2040, and the dry year supply short pulls could be up to 52%. And however, regardless of the advantages provided by recycled water, this is a very significant shortfall that has not been seen across the regional water supply system. It does present a very significant challenge to not only the city, but also other wholesale agencies. And we, in the Urban Water Management Plan, will acknowledge these significant shortages. However, we will also acknowledge, as previous discussed, there is tremendous amount of uncertainties associated with implementing the Bay Delta Plan. The situation is dynamic and as negotiations continue, these reliability outlook could change as a situation involved in. And if it changes before the next round of Urban Water Management Planning, there is an option to amend this plan, and that would be, and if the outlook is significantly better, it would be a very good thing. Next slide, please. So in addition to the uncertainties in the plan, we'll also discuss the water supply demand management actions and strategies that the city has taken or is planning to take. Specifically, back in 2017, the city sent a letter to the state board noting the impacts of the Bay Delta Plan and also supporting alternatives to the plan. The city is also taking significant strides in developing alternative supplies, including groundwater and recycled water, implementing water conservation programs, and also is updating its water shortage continuing plan in coordination with cow water for similar messaging across the city. Next slide, please. So as I, so as I mentioned, there is, this is quite a presented, present level shortage to be seen across the regional water system. And obviously, Menlo Park is in the better position than most other agencies who can only rely on the single source of potable water. So therefore, agencies are having conversations that have never been had before, from expanding alternative supplies, increasing water conservation, to even considering developing water neutral growth policies and development moratoriums or closure of non-essential businesses during droughts. And this last point brings us to the last component that I'll introduce today is the city's planned actions during a drought in the water shortage contingency plan. The updated water shortage contingency plan includes six levels, six stages prescribed by the state that has the percentage shortage range required by the state, and each of the stage will be declared by the city council. And upon the determination if SFPUC, San Francisco, or other governing authority determines there is voluntary or mandatory reduction due to water supply shortages or emergency. Next slide, please. The plan in each of the stages contains actions to be implemented by the city or its customers in response to the droughts to temporarily reduce water demand. And those actions, we have designed them with city staff to focus on discretionary or outdoor water use and focuses on a few simple actions to make messaging and enforcement and compliance easier, and also focusing on providing flexibility to customers in meeting these savings objectives. Particularly in the stages five and six for shortages over 40%, the plan utilizes emergency supply wells as a supply augmentation during significant shortage conditions, and also establishing an account level water use budget by sector. And these measures have been quantitatively assessed using EKI's drought response to verify the program's effectiveness.
So clearly, this round of Urban Water Management Plans has produced some pretty unprecedented results, some of which are going to be very challenging, especially for a city that has as much planned growth and development as Menlo Park. So we wanted to bring this information to you and, you know, open up the discussion about what it means and what the implications are. As Tina and Nicole both alluded to, there is a tremendous amount of uncertainty right now. If the voluntary settlement negotiations are successful, the supply reliability picture could change significantly and to the better, and we hope that's where it is. Clearly, the actions you've taken to date in terms of investing in recycled water, investing in groundwater are serving you well, enable, you know, and being able to show shortages of only 40, you know, 2%, 44%. Many of your partner agencies here on the peninsula are showing shortages upwards of 54% in dry years. So we're in a really significant unprecedented condition. We really hope that San Francisco can find a way to meet its level of service goals and meet its contractual obligations. And that's going to be probably a really important focus, as Nicole alluded to as well in terms of BOSTCA and also the member agencies. So with that, certainly, we're available to answer any questions.
So just quickly, before we take questions and public comment, I'll just kind of wrap up the presentation with a little bit of a timeline. So the, we are having, obviously, the study session here tonight on April 13th. We anticipate the draft Urban Water Management Plan to be available for public viewing at the end of the month, taking into any, into consideration any direction provided by council this evening. The public hearing would occur on May 25th, and that would allow us to meet our July 1st deadline for submitting the plan to the State Water Resources Control Board. Again, the, some of the confirmations or direction that we're looking for are to include SFPUC's supply reliability data with the Bay Delta Plan in the Urban Water Management Plan. And for reference, amongst the BOSTCA agencies, I think almost, almost every single one is planning on including that, that data in their plan along with the, a, a non-drought or non-Bay Delta Plan as a, as a, an amendment or an appendix in their plan. We also want to confirm that we should include the drought cutbacks that have been presented by BOSTCA, and also, and then finally confirm that public hearing date. With that, again, we are all here to, available to take, take questions either before or after public comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Lamb and everyone else for that presentation. I want to go to public comment first. But, but Councilmember Mueller, if there's something you want to say that you think should go before public comment, have you do? Okay. So let's go to public comment, and then we'll bring it back to, we'll start with Councilmember Mueller when we, when we come back to the virtual bias.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item G1, Direction on the Draft 2021 Urban Water Management Plan and Draft Water Shortage Contingency Plan, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine to raise your virtual hand at this time. And our first public commenter will be Peter Dreckmeyer.
Good evening. My name is Peter Dreckmeyer, and I am the Policy Director for the Tuolumne River Trust. I also live in Palo Alto, one block from Menlo Park, right across the creek. I'm really glad I tuned in because you need to hear some other numbers. I'm here to provide a reality check, and I'm happy to answer any questions. One thing I noticed in the EKI presentation is a couple of times they mentioned according to numbers from the SFPUC and BOSTCA. And that's really important because the numbers that go in really affect the numbers that come out. The SFPUC plans for something called a design drought. I don't think you heard about that tonight, but that explains how they come up with these numbers of 50% rationing, things like that. So the design drought is based on demand being the contractual obligations, 265 million gallons per day. And they're planning for an eight-and-a-half-year drought that combines the two worst droughts of the last century, 87 to 92, followed immediately by 76, 77. And so what they have to do is figure, how do we spread out the rationing through those first five years in order to make it through an eight-and-a-half-year drought? In reality, with the Urban Water Management Plan, all they have to do is say, here's how we would manage the worst five-year drought on record, okay? And the truth is, at current demand, they could manage the worst drought on record, six years, 87 to 92, without requiring any rationing. With rationing, they could make it through their whole entire eight-and-a-half-year drought. But you don't hear these things. Instead, you hear that the Bay Delta Plan is going to bankrupt us, and there's a much better alternative, the Tuolumne River Voluntary Agreement. That's a joke. This was science prepared by the Agricultural Irrigation Districts. It wasn't peer reviewed until the National Marine Fisheries Service commissioned a peer review that found major flaws. There was a workshop, two workshops at the SFPUC about the science, and there's serious doubt, there's not a single environmental group that supports the Tuolumne River Voluntary Agreement. There was also a workshop on water supply and demand just a couple of weeks ago. These are both posted online. And what we found is that if we took a year off of the design droughts, of seven and a half years, we treated demand realistically, what it is today, or maybe growing a little bit. And we brought on a little bit of alternative water supplies, we could make it through that drought. So the Bay Delta Plan is in crisis, the Tuolumne River is in crisis. There used to be well over 100,000 salmon in the Tuolumne. This year, there were 1,000. And the water agencies that have led to the decline are saying, we have better science than the state water board does. So what I, what I'd like to encourage Menlo Park to do, regardless, independent of the Urban Water Management Plan, is hear from both sides. Have BOSTCA give their presentation, have us give our presentation, and make up your mind yourself about what we need to do to move forward to protect the Bay Delta in the best way and ensure reliable water supply. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call on public comment for our study session item G1. And seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk and Councilmember Mueller.
So first off, I just want to say to all the parties involved, you know, respect all, all. I, as the council knows, I recently joined BOSTCA, the BOSTCA Board, and walked into all of this, and really didn't know I was walking into all of this to the extent I was. And Ms. Nkula, I think, would tell you, and I had a conversation just with her today, where I have, I have questions about, about all of this that haven't been resolved yet. So I've spoken to all of you in council and said that I really wanted to have a presentation where I heard from both sides on this, and council weighed in on it. I'm still coming up to speed on it. So I actually, from my personal, from my personal standpoint, having a session with BOSTCA presenting and the Tuolumne River Trust presenting actually be beneficial for me. I learned information tonight, but I really would love that sort of balanced presentation to, to help me both come to my conclusion and also to hear from my colleagues as to, as to weigh their input. I know that in Palo Alto, they have done something to that. Actually, interestingly enough, in Palo Alto, the elected member to, the member of BOSTCA reached a different conclusion than the council they serve on. So anyway, I'd love to hear from all of you and also have that. And candidly, it's very difficult in a BOSTCA board meeting to have that discussion because there are elected representatives from all over in that. And so you don't want to take a lot of their time trying to get people to explain all of that to you while you have all these elected officials there. And candidly, almost all of those elected officials, it appears, have already reached their decision on this topic. So being able to have that as a study session in one of our meetings would be very beneficial. So, and I've shared with Ms. Nkula, I care tremendously about, about the Tuolumne River and Yosemite Valley and that, and that entire ecosystem. And so that has given me a tremendous amount of pause as we approach this, but I want to do the right thing. And the right thing, I think, is really to have that discussion. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. We're going to try with this study session and some of the regular session items, a little bit of a different approach. And so, you know, I'll cycle through all of the council members to see what their, their initial sort of questions and comments are, and then not for, for this, this item, but for regular items, then I'll ask for a motion for this item. We'll just sort of then go back after those initial questions and comments and see what, what sort of actions there seems to be, what are the actions on the table, or directions on the table, and what there seems to be some, some consensus. Are directions on the table and what there seems to be some, some consensus regarding next steps? I'll, I'll sort of kick it off and then, then go down. Obviously, council member Mueller has gone through this first go around. And so, so, so I have a question, which, and maybe this was, was mentioned and I just missed it, but there, there is a lawsuit at play, correct? With regards to this, 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 the, the plan? Can someone give me sort of the, and it could be the, the Reader's Digest summary or the Cliff Notes on the lawsuit and, and where, where, where we are? Or, you know, what side Menlo Park has committed to? If, if it has committed to, 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 to one of the sides?
Would you like me to answer that?
Sure, Ms. Ms. Nkula.
Certainly. So there is actually a consolidated set of lawsuits that have been consolidated through the courts. And I, to be honest, I was not prepared to speak to the legal, this legal issue, but I can give you my, my, where it's at is that the, there are over 25 different entities that have sued on different aspects of the adoption of the Bay Delta plan, both sides of it, right? In support against either way, the court has consolidated, consolidated all of those together. And that consolidated case is still in the very early stages. They are just now getting agreement on the administrative record. So it's a, it's a slow growing process. BASKA intervened in one case, you know, now we're part of the consolidated case and the intervention was with the San Juan team trib's authority in San Francisco's lawsuit. And it is a SEQA question related to the adequacy of the SEQA document that the state board adopted when it determined these impacts, which they recognized as well in their document. But their assessment was that the entire service area could readily survive impacts of 40 to 50%. And the determination that we've made is that they have not done an adequate SEQA analysis of the impacts of the adopted plan and what you would do in the case of those impacts. And what are the impacts of those actions? So that is the basis for our suit. And I, I can't really speak to the other pieces of it.
And just is, is, and I know Mr. Dreckmeyer is, is in the public comment, but is the Twalome River Trust also a party to, to one of those suits? Or has, or is it a party at all? Can, can anyone answer that question?
I, I do not know.
Um, okay, with, with that, well, council member Mueller, do you want to answer that question or?
I don't know the answer to that question. I also don't know the answer to the question if Menlo Park ever voted to be. I know our council didn't, but I don't know if our representative ever counted voted to be part of this lawsuit. Like, there's a lot I'm trying to understand right now. We haven't had a vote, we haven't had a vote to affirm the lawsuits since I joined BASKA. And I don't know if that is something that would ever happen again. So I'm just, I'm worrying to Ms. Nkula and BASKA's credit, like they're trying to spend as much time as I have available to educate me on these things. Or we're just trying to get through it. But I don't, I don't specifically have an answer for that question.
Totally fair. All right. So then we'll go to Vice Mayor Nash to see if she has any, any questions or comment.
Thank you. I do. I also saw City Attorney Darty pop on, so I'm wondering if there was.
Yeah, good call out.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I, I didn't have much to add other than my understanding of the lawsuit is probably even less in depth than Nicole's and, and is reflective of what Nicole just described. I, I also understand that the city has not considered whether or not it as a, a water provider itself wishes to intervene in, in the lawsuit. That that, that question has not actually been brought to the city.
Well, thanks for that. First, Mayor Nash.
Thank you. So I guess first of all, I want to voice support for what council member Mueller recommended of getting another study session where we really hear from both sides of the issue and get a little bit more information about it because I share the concern about the water supply on both sides for the nature and also for the, for our residents and businesses. So I guess my question is sort of looking at the projected water demands through 2040 as part of the water management plan. And essentially, it said in the staff report how it's based upon the population and employment growth from the city's general plan. And I guess my first question, I have several questions, but my first question is to staff, and that is sort of, how are we, how are we currently tracking with the number of residential units we're building and the resulting population increase compared to what was expected in the general plan? And is that something that, where we are adequately forecasting what population looks like at this point? Just, well, are we, are we ahead of where we expect it to be? Or is this an appropriate forecast? And I'm sort of assuming that's community development, very honestly.
Yes, and I will, I will maybe try to provide some filler until, until some, maybe another, another person comes on. But through the development of the urban water management plan, the, the utilities group has been working closely with, with our, our planning division to, to understand what, you know, what, what projects we have, you know, in, in the queue, so to speak, and, and what you, what the, what the plan identifies is that, you know, from, from the general plan and, and looking out over the, the 20-year horizon, that there, a bulk, a bulk of that development does, does occur in the, in the first five years. And I think that would be a representative of, of kind of the, the known projects that we have that are, that are working their way through the, through the planning cycles right now.
Is that reflected in what EKI is using to, for the projected water demands? Or are we?
Yes.
So they are acknowledging that we have that front loading?
Yes.
Wonderful. Okay. And then I guess the other piece of it is just with the drought plans. Since we've done so much of this, so much of the water cutting back on our water usage already, and certainly I think when the, when we had more rain and all, people let up a little bit on that, but we still have got so much of our landscaping has been turned over to low water landscaping. We've, people have taken out lawns. They've installed the low water toilet, you know, flush toilets and showerheads and all. And how does all of this work if we're having that significant a cutbacks?
Yeah, so I think, you know, some of that is, is the, the crux of the, the challenge with, with providing a, a flat reduction across all the BASKA agencies, because not, not all the BASKA agencies use water the same way. I, I think the, what, what, what staff and EKI did in development of the water shortage contingency plan this round is, is we looked at the, the measures that we implemented in, in our last drought and, and, and how much, how much reduction that we saw in reality. And, and to, to, you know, Menlo Park customers and residents and businesses, businesses credit, we found that, that they exceeded the, the, the kind of the, the drought reductions that we were, that we were looking for. So we've made adjustments to, to the drought, the water shortage contingency plan to, to be reflective of where we think, where we think the different measures as we implement them will, will result in, in the, in the reductions. But, but we did obviously have to develop a, a contingency plan, a water shortage contingency plan that, that goes up to a much higher percentage reduction than, than what was shown in our, in our 2015 plan.
Thank you. And then I guess just my final comment this round is I would be interested in hearing, probably not in this meeting, about how our general plan took into account or did not it, the Bay Delta plan and how that is reflected just in what was studied in the EIR.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nash. Councilmember Wilson.
Um, thank you, Mayor Combs and everyone for this very illuminating information. Learning a lot here. So I think I remember reading 2023 is when this will be decided one way or the other. Is that true even with all the lawsuits? I mean, could it drag out longer or?
For the Bay Delta plan implementation? Yeah, 2023 is the date the state boards put out, kind of as a, you know, when it would think that they could move forward with implementation, but certainly the lawsuits will drive that schedule. And, and, and to be honest, that's a significant concern with how quickly, you know, any kind of improvement gets made.
Okay. And then in terms of the gray water or recycled water, I think it's, it's great that we're using it up in Sharon Heights and it sounds like we have plans in the Bayfront. Are there any additional things we can be doing in terms of developments with gray water? Or are there, are there other opportunities to promote gray water at a city level?
So city staff is working, working closely with, with West Bay sanitary district, but, but West Bay sanitary is, is the lead agency in the development of the, of the treatment plant and, and the distribution system. So we, we've, we expect to come back to council in the next couple of months with, with an update on, on where that project is and, and an agreement with, with West Bay to, to, to serve the Bayfront area.
Okay. And then in terms of the emergency wells, I just want to put in another plug for checking with the fire district at Station One, because they're going to be reconstructing that. I'm just getting nervous about our emergency water supply and getting that going.
Yes, I, we, the, the city has re-engaged those discussions with the fire district.
Okay, wonderful. Um, and then, you know, I, you know, I think like all of us, we vow, we love Yosemite and the Twalome River and I have memories going up there as a kid. And, and it's a, it's a tricky balance. We also have a duty to our constituents to, to provide water. I, I also just want to, because I'm not sure who's listening tonight. I know when we start talking about adding housing and we're going to be going into our housing element and we're going to have a mandate to add units of housing citywide. I was taken by something that I read in the BASKA kind of explanation of the SEQA things that weren't explored. And I, I've, I've heard over the years, you know, residents expressing concern about adding more housing locally because of the water situation. And I think that's a legitimate concern for people to have. But I, I do want to point out that the SEQA concerns raised, I believe by BASKA, did kind of do a good job, I think, of showing some of the issues with sprawl. And if we, on a bigger level environmentally and water outside of our borders and how if, if development and housing gets pushed out into remoter, hotter areas, the, the, the amount of pollution that goes into that water traveling down even older pipes and it's hotter out there, so they use more water. So I would just encourage anyone who is concerned about, this is kind of to the public who's concerned about water as it relates to adding more housing locally, which I, I think is a legitimate concern as we're hearing tonight, to, to look at. I think it's on page 1.57 to 1.58. I just found it, did a really good job kind of explaining some of the dangers of sprawl. So I want to thank everyone. And in terms of the issues being, oh, I don't know if Mayor Combs, if you want me to address the direction items as well. Yeah. Okay. So in terms of the specific direction that staff is seeking, in terms of like wrapping up this report, I, I would be in support of including it with the Bay Delta plan and also of using the drought cutback amounts. And I think I remember Nicole, you saying that it could be, if we get to that point, there could be talks within BASKA about the specific, it won't necessarily be 20% across, that it could be a, a larger conversation. But I don't know how that gets reflected in this report on item two, because it looks like this is just talking about the flat amount.
Actually, I think the item two speaks to what the direction is that we provided all the agencies and the numbers they have, which is that anything above 20% then becomes a straight across cutback for everybody. So if it's a 30% reduction to the wholesale customers, each and every one of the wholesale customers gets a 30% reduction from the baseline number. Whereas within the 10 to 20% range, there's a current plan among the wholesale customers that allocates the water available on the formula. So it does attempt to kind of identify differences between you. So the cutbacks are not uniform in that 10 to 20% scenario. But since the current plan specifically actually doesn't anticipate or doesn't speak to cutbacks greater than 20%, we had to make some assumption, at least for this planning purpose, because it was so significant about how they would be, at least what we should plan for. It may not be necessarily how it's applied. And the language in the urban water management plan that Tina mentioned, you know, it basically says that, you know, the, the parties have, you know, agree already to come together in that event to try to figure out how to more adequately allocate supplies, essentially getting down to public health and safety issues. And how do we do that? But it's hard to do that in advance at this point and there's no plan in place for it.
Okay. Yeah, I would say, I would add kind of a, I know we overuse the word equity in this town, but kind of a, a communities of concern, making sure that in public safety and health and wellness and prioritizing the most, those most in need. So, um, uh, thank you. And so I think that's, that's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. So we're going to go to Councilmember Taylor to see if she has any, any comments or questions. And then I see you, Councilmember Mueller, we'll, we'll get you on the, the second, the second go around. And yeah, I do want to clear up some logistical stuff about, about next steps. But right now, Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. And I wanted to just echo the sentiment of both Councilmember Mueller with the recommendation of having another study session and then looking at both sides. And then also, some of the questions that I have have actually already been asked by other council members. But one in specific is how does the downtown specific plan fit in this? I know we were talking about the general plans and its projected growth, but how does the downtown specific plan fit in as well? And then also, Mr. Lamb, you brought up that we will have an update on the water recycling plant that West Bay is building out on Bayfront. Is there a, a projected completion date? Or is that going to be a part of the update coming to us in a couple of months?
I, thank you, Councilmember Taylor. I'll, I'll start with the second one. We, that would definitely be part of the, the update. And I, I'm afraid if I, if I said something off the top of my head, it's, it's likely to be wrong. So I'd, I'd rather get you the, the accurate data in the next couple of months here. The downtown specific plan, so the, that is actually in the Cal Water Service area. And so as we, you know, kind of unique to Menlo Park, I think amongst most agencies is, is the kind of the even split between Menlo Park Municipal Water and, and Cal Water serving. Menlo Park Municipal Water and and Cal Water serving serving the two areas. So Cal Water is is also putting together an urban water management plan. We've we've coordinated with Cal Water on the on the water shortage contingency plan. And we've we've reached out to Cal Water on on the, you know, with what with what planning data that that they'll need to to complete their 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 urban water management plan. But I don't believe that we've gotten the the actual data request from them yet. So they are they are likely using whatever is published right now, which would include the the downtown specific plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor, for those questions. So first I went to in responding to a point that Councilmember Wilson brought up about the the second emergency well and the possibility of it of being on on Fire District property. My understanding that at some point in the near future, we will get a letter from the Fire District about their continued interest in the Choco property, which they they lease from the city. My understanding is that there will be a mention of this emergency well possibility as part of that that letter. So so just a heads up on 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 that. The other thing I wanted to, so Councilmember Mueller brought up this this idea of an additional study session where essentially we would kind of hear more from Basca specifically and then also from, you know, maybe Mr. Druckmeyer or maybe others with with similar with similar interests. And so my question is, is that that that's totally fine, but is that a necessary element to provide direction that is being asked here tonight from from staff? And specifically, again, about sort of the 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 FFPUC data, whether it should be included in 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 confirming, including the Basca data. And and then obviously, the other element was was the public, the the public hearing date. So I just want to want to see if 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 that suggestion is additive to this process or whether it it sort of inserts itself in this process in in any substantive way. Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, you read my mind because I was going to touch on that, Mayor Combs. So for me, actually, it does touch on that, and I'll tell you why. And I could be wrong, and the staff could correct me if I'm wrong. But what I believe is going to happen with this document, once we approve and include the information as requested, is that the document will be combined with documents from other jurisdictions to be exhibits in the in the ongoing discussions at the state level that that the member agencies have adopted these figures and support them, put them into their into their urban water plans. And based on these projections, this this settlement is necessary. And staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's what I think that's why we're being asked for these things. And so and that is perfectly appropriate, once I understand that it's perfectly appropriate. But I'm not sure, but because there is this sort of competing dialogue, and I'm not sure necessarily that, you know, the Twalome River Trust would be the other entity, but maybe it would be someone who actually helped put together the Bay, the Bay Delta Plan as the entity. But I, at this point, I feel like I know I know enough now to know that there is this debate taking place. And it is to these underlying figures that and we're being asked to accept. And and I respect, again, I respect all the stakeholders, but I also don't want to get ahead of understanding that analysis where I've reached the determination myself of what is the correct path to take. So to say, okay, we're going to, because I would ask, I would say to staff, like my my question to professional staff right now is what happens if we don't do that? What happens if we don't follow the recommendations and we just put in the Bay Delta Plan figures? What's the import?
Is there Mr. Lamb, will you?
I I think I'll.
Before you go, could you, Mr. Lamb, or the city court put up the 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 slide that specifically has the direction that it's it's looking for from from council? Okay, please continue, Mr. Lamb.
Chris, do you want me to respond?
Yes, please.
So the regulations for urban water management plans require that if you get water from a wholesaler, that you are to use the reliability projections from your wholesaler in your urban water management plan. So what we are reflecting here is the best available information on supply reliability from your wholesaler. And, you know, San Francisco has provided multiple scenarios. But the one that is being presented here reflects projected purchases and the supply reliability that, you know, they have put forward under the assumption that the Bay Delta Plan is implemented. The alternative scenario that they ran was without the Bay Delta Plan being implemented, which, in my opinion, is an even less likely scenario because the Bay Delta Plan has been adopted. So there is no reality where there is no Bay Delta Plan. And so the the most reasonable scenario and the one that San Francisco is relying on is the one that assumes the Bay Delta Plan. You would be vulnerable to challenge if you used a different reliability assumption than your wholesaler was using. Because on what basis are you assuming a different reliability than your wholesaler is telling you they're able to provide?
So and that leads me to my question, which had me candidly a little confused, is why were we being asked at all? Right? So it's kind of like, I mean, I I appreciate the study session because I got to, I've learned more. But but the question would be, you know, what are the things that we really have a choice on this evening, respect to what we're being asked?
I think confirming the the public, the public hearing for me 25th seems to be, it seems to be the the main action, I know. But but can can anyone sort of provide an answer to to Councilmember Mueller? Because certainly certainly that that's that's my question, too, that this is seems sort of perfunctory, right? And 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 if that that is the case, it's totally fine, but I think that there needs to be transparency there that 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 we really don't have much ability to go beyond to to input our own numbers. We have to go with what the SFPUC and with Basca have have already presented.
San Francisco actually provided maybe nine, six or nine different supply reliability projections. And so and they they said, and Basca said, you can use any one of these that you choose. But the one that we recommended to the city was the one that was consistent with what San Francisco is using, which, and is is my understanding, is consistent with what almost every single other Basca agency is using, which is projected demands, so that's that scale up over time. And, you know, reliability that comes out of San Francisco's model. So yes, there are many different scenarios. The what maybe wasn't as clear in the presentation today is that the one that we're being presented here is one of those many scenarios. The the others will be included as an appendix. But it's pretty clear that there the rationale and the logic for the one that is being presented in the, you know, that was presented here tonight and that we would recommend be presented in the plan as the best available information at this time.
May I ask, what was the scenario that Palo Alto used? Because that's a good reference point for me to understand the difference, because I know the Palo Alto, City of Palo Alto Council has taken a position different than Basca. So I'm very curious what they used in their urban water management plan.
I don't know.
They have not, yeah, they have not gotten to this point yet, so I don't have that information yet.
Okay.
So then, okay, so so and and just to be clear, there there hasn't been sort of with regards to the the nine options, there hasn't been sort of transparency to to counsel on exactly what what those are, like where we haven't actually seen them, right? We're we're mostly just going on the recommendation from from the consultants and from city staff regarding the the one specific plan.
Correct. I I do not believe that the nine alternatives were included in the in the staff report.
So I know myself personally, I'd like it to come back, just so I under, so I'm really making a real choice. And I'm and I don't mean any disrespect to our consultant or professional staff or to Basca. But this is, this is much more complex than than the surface level because there's underlying policy decisions toward this decision that's predicated on. And part of my, part of my frustration is that's just, I feel like I'm near the middle to end of a book that I was supposed to be reading, or at least new to be reading before now. So that's where I am on it, though I though I very much appreciate that we need to, we need to get caught up to speed very quickly. And finally, the last note that I, my colleagues and to professional staff and consultants and Miss and Kula is the fact that I have Yosemite as my screensaver when I turn my, and half dome, when I turn my video on was not for this presentation. It's always that way. That way wasn't intended at all to be, it's just a miracle instance of the circumstance and events of the season.
Mr. Councilmember Mueller, just just so like, what specifically else would you like to see in this this additional study session? Like, so, yeah.
I'd like to see the nine. I'd like to know the difference between the nine and understand, and maybe it can be explained tonight, but what's the difference between us saying this as opposed to the other other eight, or the appendix, or choosing one of those as opposed to this one? What's what's the import of that?
I'll I'll briefly, since I brought it up. So basically, the first round of scenarios that we got showed a full demand of 265 on the system against with and without Bay Delta. So again, the scenario I told you about that assumed the Bay Delta Plan had never existed and the full demand on the system of 265. And the other that showed the effects of the the Bay Delta Plan against that, that full system. Then there was much discussion. And a revised demand projection was run through the model that showed, and this was consistent with the ask of the Twalome River Trust, and the Basca agencies also supported this ask because it is most logical is to have the modeling reflect the projected demands increasing over time. And so that model was run against the with and without Bay Delta. Now, there are multiple variants because there's, this is minutia. There are requirements to do specific, very near term, five year drought analysis, and so multiple analyses come out of that. But there's probably been, I'm not exaggerating, I say hundreds of pages of analysis have been conducted over the last several months trying to develop reasonable supply and demand scenarios that all of the agencies can use in the urban water management plans. So the crux of the matter, there's really four scenarios that are at the crux of the matter. Whether you assume a full 265 demand on the system against with or without Bay Delta, or you assume a gradually increasing demand with and without Bay Delta. And that latter one, you know, was consistent with advocacy on the part of some Basca agencies and also on the part of the Twalome River Trust. And that is the recommendation that we have brought forward today as part of the plan development in working through staff. That was our recommendation to staff. And it's it's two things. I mean, it's the most reasonable. It also shows a much better result for you in terms of a shortage. Your shortages were more significant under the 265 scenario. So I actually think it's a reasonable representation that actually does some of the alternative viewpoints that were mentioned today. And at this point, given the uncertainty, it's it's a pretty good thing. And it's what are the wholesaler is using. And again, we have, we have a lot of vulnerability if we're not saying the same thing that our wholesaler.
Okay, with that, with that explanation, Councilmember Comes, I think I can move forward this evening. So.
And and just sort of the following up on that a bit, i- do we know, is is there, you know, some of the municipalities under Basca that have gotten to this point and have, you know, picked an alternative plan that we did? And and just what's a quick reasoning, who that is and what was what's a like, again, a very quick reasoning as as to why they 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 went with one of the alternatives?
Well, I can speak to EKI because we're preparing about 12 of the Basca Agency Urban Water Management Plans. And in all cases, we're using the same scenario that San Francisco is using, which is what we presented here. And again, it's because you have a significant vulnerability. If you're presenting a different reliability assumption, then your wholesaler is telling you that you have.
In, okay, so you don't, you don't, you can't speak directly of of any agency that's using.
Oh, Berlin game, North Coast County Water District, Astero Municipal Water District, Redwood City, all of the Cal Water districts.
Are using alternatives than this one or using the same?
They're all using the same methodology.
Okay, do so do you know who's using an alternative method or the an alternative?
I don't know of anybody.
I I do not know of any agency that is using an alternative to what is being recommended to you tonight.
And then just finally, and I don't, maybe you answer this, but to Councilmember Mueller's question of what is the import of us like having some plan, like if if we have a plan that says like, you know, Bay Delta isn't going to happen and Bay Delta happens. I mean, what's what's the real, you know, at the end of the day, we can sort of plan forever. We want to plan. If the reality is different from the plan, then it's just our bad, but we still have to live with what the reality is. And so I I'm just sort of like, again, and again, I I think the council seems to be all aligned, and so I don't really want to make this go any longer, but I'm just trying to, that would be just important to understand, like.
Yeah, I totally, it's a great question. I will tell you what you've done here in this plan is you are doing a conservative approach. You would, given what we understand, the Bay Delta Plan has been adopted. There's a lot of uncertainty about its implementation, but it will have an impact on supply reliability. And you are planning for what some might call a worst case scenario. But regardless, the supply reliability without significant investment on the part of San Francisco or yourselves to build up alternative supplies is going to look very different in the future than it has historically. And so you are conservatively planning for that new horizon.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller, are you going to add something?
Yeah, so I'm fine with moving forward this evening. I just would like it noted within the document that we have an op, as what's been represented. We have an obligation to represent, to to rely upon that of our wholesaler to be put into the document. If later, after the workshop, it might, you know, our council looks at it and the council has a strong feeling about this and then discovers this document is being used for lobbying purposes, contrary to a position the council may take in the future that we can point to that, to that, that sentence saying, look, we we had a wholesale, we had an obligation to rely upon the figures of our wholesaler. If we put that, as long as that sentence is in there, then I'm just fine with moving forward tonight. I still would very much like to have the workshop in the future because I think it's going to be informative in terms of how to move forward on the Basca Board. So both that, I I close my comment because I know we have a lot of other things to get to this evening.
Yeah. City Manager Jerome Robinson.
So I just wanted to clarify, are is the request for a study session or workshop? And if it's a workshop, let me know what that means.
At this moment, let's 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 pause the request for any additional meetings. I I think that there, yeah, and and then we can, we can have maybe Councilmember Mueller as the Basca representative to take the lead on how, whether it's a workshop or study session of how that might look coming back. But it's not going to be dependent on on what we're doing now specifically. And so so I I don't think we have to. And so, so I don't think we have to worry about sort of hashing that all out right now.
Okay, thank you.
Um, okay. So again, I'm, I'm aligned with, with the, the, the recommendations. The requested direction from, from staff. Is, is there, does anyone else want to, to, to chime in or have something different as far as? Okay. Councilmember Taylor only because I can't, can't see you. So I just want to make sure you're, you're cool with, with proceeding.
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay. Well, then we're good. Thank you, everyone for, for, for this, this presentation and for, for this, this discussion. And, and just confirming, Mr. Lamb, right? You, you have the direction you need. Correct.
Yes, I think, I think we're, we're good to move forward. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, all right. With, with that, we're going to take a recess now. And so let's come back at 7:45.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So just a reminder, we asked that all city council members disengage their webcams and microphones. And only engage your webcams when you return. Thank you.
Yes, Neera, I can hear you.
Thanks, Judy. I just called in because my sound issues were continuing, so I'm gonna use my phone instead. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, having all city council members return to our virtual days, Mayor Combs, you may reconvene the meeting.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. With that, we'll report out from closed session, and with that, I'll turn to City Attorney Neridordi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action from closed session.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to Section I, Public Comment. Under Public Comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda, and speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limited three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general direction. City Clerk Karen, can you call for public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine to raise your virtual hand. And our first public commenter is Jay.
Hi, my name is Jay Siegel, and I'm a resident of Menlo Park, and the Water District is proposing a new three-tier set of increasing water rates built on assumptions of household water usage. Tier one assumes that individuals in a family each uses up to 55 gallons per day, tier two up to 110 gallons per day, and tier three usage greater than tier two. The critical reality is that the Water District's residential customers are not families but water meters. For single-family residents, this is not an issue. One meter measures the water usage of one family. However, for multifamily residences, this is a serious issue as one meter measures the water consumption of many families. For example, I live in a condominium complex in Sharon Heights that has one meter for 57 families. I checked our water bill for this past March and August, and March, our single meter measured 224 CCFs of consumption. Wow, that's a lot. However, there are 57 families in our complex, so the average usage per family was only 3.9 CCFs for March, right in the middle of tier one. In August, it was 9.2 per family, right in the middle of tier two. However, since the Water District bills water meters, not families, we would be charged tier three rates for 95% of our water consumption, not just in March and August, but every month of the year. California is currently experiencing a drought, and we're likely to have more severe droughts. The Water District has a six-stage contingency plan. A stage three emergency requires a total water use reduction of 30%, and customers in tier one are required to reduce consumption by 2%, tier two by 5.5%, and in tier three by 40.3%. All multifamily residents' water meters will be in tier three and will be required to reduce their water consumption by almost seven times more than tier two single-family residences. Families living in apartments and condominiums have a smaller footprint in terms of land use and water consumption, not to mention income, than single-family residences and should not shoulder a significantly greater burden of water use reduction. The proposed rates are not, quote, "the best compromise between fairness and the promotion of water conservation for multifamily residents." It's never too late to do the right thing. I urge the city council to do the right thing and correct the proposed new water rates so that they treat multifamily residences fairly. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And Jay, just so you know, I will be adding your public comment to the agenda item I believe that we have on the floor for this. Oh, my apologies. Wrong agenda. I'm thinking way far ahead. So Jay, thank you for your public comment. So this will be the final call for general public comment for items not on the agenda. Seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. With that, we'll move on to, and thank you, Mr. Siegel, for the public comment. With that, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Under the consent calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests, then an item be discussed or continued to a later date. First of all, we'll go to see if there's public comment for the consent calendar. Sir, City Clerk Karen, can you call for public comment?
Yes, thank you again, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our consent calendars, items J1 through J4 regarding the city council meeting minutes, the receive and file of city council and advisory body annual attendance report, the post-extension of terms for various advisory bodies extending recruitment application deadlines and postponing interviews and appointments to various bodies, and finally, approve city council policy amending the city council anti-harassment and nondiscrimination policy and policy or an anti-bullying. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in, please press star nine, and that will also raise your virtual hand. So final call for any public comment on our consent calendar, items J1 through J4. Seeing none, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. With that, I have a note that staff wants to write additional information or update on item J3.
Yeah, thank you so very much, Mayor Combs. Can you wait one moment to update what you're viewing? Okay, so I would just like to direct the city council and our members of the public to an updated table for the staff report related to recruitment for our open vacancies on advisory bodies. I did want to provide you with two updates. The first one is I've added a second column here to the table that is available on page two of the staff report. What it's showing is that as of today at 4:00 PM, we have received one additional Complete Streets Commission application. We've received two additional EQC applicants, one FAC withdrawal of an application due to residency, one additional Housing Commission applicant, one additional Library Commission applicant, one additional Parks and Recreation applicant, and one additional Planning Commission applicant for a total of 20 total applications. However, we're still short of applicants to fill vacancies on certain commissions. The second update I wanted to provide is with the withdrawal of the FAC application, there is now only one applicant who is applying for both the Complete Streets Commission and the Housing Commission. In the original staff report, it was one applicant for the finance and audit and the same applicant for a planning commission. So again, so when you appoint to one of those, then you'd be losing one applicant to the other body. And that was the update that I did want to provide to the city council tonight.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. Just a quick question on this item. Are we sort of, you know, in any way communicating to, let's say, the Complete Streets Commission candidates and the EQC candidates that maybe they can also might be interested in applying to Parks and Rec or the Library Commission where at this moment, right, there are more vacancies than there are candidates? Have we, what success do we have? Is that something that we ever communicate?
So the city council has in recent past, while making appointments to these various bodies, have asked applicants to fill positions on other bodies. Staff has not in the past reached out to these applicants, finding out their interest in serving on another body. But again, that is the direction we can do that. But again, it has been done in the past during the appointment period for our city council to request an applicant to perhaps fill a vacancy on a board they may not have applied for.
Okay, thanks for additional information. So regarding the consent calendar items, is there, are there comments, questions, if someone went to formally pull something from the consent calendar? I will also entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. Councilmember Taylor.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I have a motion, Councilmember Wilson.
A second.
Okay, we have a first and a second.
Thank you. So we do have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Taylor and a second by City Councilmember Wilson to approve the consent calendar. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, City Councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
City Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
Mayor Combs.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. With that, we'll move on to the regular business portion of the meeting. Under Regular Business, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. The first item under Regular Business is K1, authorize the city manager to address immediate and critical staffing needs for childcare program supervision. Here to introduce the item is Library and Community Services Director Sean Reiner.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and City Council. Just getting the screen share set up here. So thank you for taking the time this evening to hear this item. This is requesting authorization for the city manager to address immediate and critical staffing needs for childcare program supervision. Start with the recommendations. Just as a refresher, what's being requested of the city council tonight is to authorize the addition of 2.0 full-time equivalent personnel at the library and community services supervisor level and 1.0 full-time equivalent personnel at the library and community services manager level. Associated with that, actually in the following item, which is numbered K two on the agenda, if council authorizes these positions, an additional action is required to amend the city council adopted salary schedule to include salary ranges for those two positions. A quick overview from the information provided in the staff report, the city directly operates two preschool childcare centers, the Bell Haven Child Development Center and the Menlo Children's Center. Combined, they serve up to one hundred and fifty-six preschool-aged children. In addition, those two centers are the base of operations for our after-school programs. Again, they're traditionally at the Onetta Harris Community Center and also at the Menlo Children's Center. Typically during the school year, they serve up to one hundred and forty-one school-aged children in the out-of-school time. Additionally, we operate summer camps, which are a form of childcare for preschool and school-aged children, children most summers. The childcare programs are regulated and licensed by the state of California and the county of San Mateo. Teachers and site supervisors are subject to professional licensing and permit requirements in order to serve in those capacities. There has been a chronic investment in childcare staffing in recent years for many reasons, many good ones, but that's just the situation that we're in. And there are anticipated and unanticipated staff transitions that have occurred, in particular in the past year during the pandemic, which has left us with a lack of qualified and licensed personnel to fill key supervisory roles, which have become vacant. Some additional analysis, as the title of the item suggests, there is an immediate and critical need for qualified supervisory and management personnel in childcare. The Library and Community Services Department has been severely impacted by budget and personnel reductions, in particular in the current fiscal year, on the order of seventeen percent. There's been a prolonged pandemic and economic austerity. I know when the pandemic and the budget reductions first occurred, it was thought that the pandemic might be lasting maybe a few months. And as we all know, it has lasted quite a bit longer, as has the downturn. So the temporary, you know, solutions put in place have been extended for quite some time. The childcare operation, as you sure are aware, is such that the city's exposure diversity is elevated in the event of any operational failure. Recruitment and onboarding of new personnel can take four to six months, can be done a little bit faster, but just being realistic about how long the process takes. If the immediate staffing needs are left unaddressed, the childcare programs will be at risk of operational failure due to lack of qualified personnel at the childcare sites. I want to be clear, they are not failing at this moment, but here to let you know that they are definitely at risk if these staffing needs are not addressed. Some staff transitions that have occurred in recent years, the two preschool childcare sites in particular have historically been supervised by a combination of four qualified full-time employees. That's with the licenses and permits to serve in those roles. Recruitment and retention has been a significant challenge in the childcare program in particular, with some of the position titles typically in the private sector, childcare supervisors are referred to as childcare directors, as opposed to supervisors or coordinators. There have been positions frozen, there's been staff attrition, there have been transfers out to other departments during the pandemic. We currently have folks in interim and acting roles that was intended to be temporary. And of course, that's been extended by the pandemic. Quite a number of family and medical leaves occur, and we have some more that we know are coming, that will be extended, the use of key personnel. Again, I mentioned the operating and budget, operating budget and personnel reductions. And as well, most recently, the Assistant Community Services Director, who has quite a bit of experience in childcare, has resigned and will be departing the city effective April fifteenth. The licensing and education retirements, they limit our ability for existing personnel to step in to those childcare roles in the event of further staff departures. As you know, the Library and Community Services Department was merged from two separate departments back in June of two thousand and twenty, including the elimination of a department head position. The merger of two departments of that scale is something that takes a couple of years at a minimum to complete. The pandemic complicated that operation, but as we look ahead to a certain level of reactivation and recovery, we are focused on continuing to evolve and iterate the department structure through fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, the following one, as we complete the merge of the department into the integrated and synergistic operation that I think has been envisioned and that we're looking to put in place. Major milestones along the way of the item before you tonight is to address the critical and immediate needs in the childcare program, hopefully leveraging the anticipated economic recovery, including potentially the American Rescue Plan, which I believe is an item later on the agenda tonight, to support rebuilding the organization's capacity to serve the community at the desired service levels as identified and directed by council. Leveraging those operational efficiencies and synergies that were conceived of when the department was merged, which we have achieved to some extent, and we want to continue to maximize that as we pivot to post-pandemic operations. And of course, implementing the interim services during the construction of the new Menlo Park Community Campus, which is set to start now and this summer. And then, of course, preparing for that new facility to open, which will be a tremendous new amenity for the community that's envisioned to be kind of the physical embodiment of the merged department and what's envisioned there. So just returning to the recommendations, what's requested of the city council tonight is to authorize the addition of the personnel mentioned. And should council authorize one or both of those positions, then in the following item, adopting the resolution number six-six-two-oh to approve the amendments to the salary schedule as described in that staff report. That's the conclusion of the brief overview. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for that presentation, Sir Reinhardt. City Clerk Karen, can we call for a public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. I did have a request from staff if we could combine public comment for items K one and K two, or we can keep them separate. Your call.
Yeah, we can combine them.
Okay, so for members of the public who wish to speak on item K one, authorize the city manager to address immediate and critical staffing needs for childcare program supervision. Or public comment on item K two, adopt resolution number six-six-two-zero to approve amendments to the salary schedule as of April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in from a cell phone or firm landline, please press star nine. Our first public speaker will be Katie Beruzzi.
Hi, Council. Um, I am, this caught me off guard, so I'm composing myself for a sec. But I wanted to just say something quickly. When I was reading through the K two attachment, I believe this is the one where they, there's a policing addition request, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong. Um, I, I was interested in the goals that were attached to the description of the positions. And, you know, those are goals that I share, actually. It said something about, now I'm not finding the attachment anymore, but anyway, there was something about, you know, long-term safety issues in our community, which I think is really important to address. And that they want to decrease this frequency and severity of collisions, you know, address the needs of community, including school zone enforcement, and provide public education on bicycle and pedestrian safety, and there were a bunch of other things. I just wanted to make a few points here. I would love to see us take a more strategic and multidisciplinary approach to this challenge. And I don't have, I, you know, other people might want to speak about policing in Menlo Park and profiling and the association with traffic. And I started digging into data, and I have some questions about that, too. But just addressing the goals for a minute, I would like to say that I think we need, you know, that some kinds of traffic enforcement are really a Band-Aid. And that a lot of the goals and the things that were described in that particular paragraph, I think are actually better done by some other people. I don't think that necessarily our officers, as wonderful as they are, are the best at bicycle education. I think that things like parking enforcement and crossing guards and things, the kinds of things that make a school zone safer can be done by other divisions even. I had this brainstorm, for example, that we could hire crossing guards from our existing community services staff, like, you know, it's a small job, it's a part-time job, it's a job that's hard to recruit for. It's a job that we have unevenly distributed around the city. And I would love to see us, you know, empowering our community services department to work with all of our school districts and all of our schools and all of our tough intersections to help kids cross the street safely and have that be something that the city actually can do, maybe using staff that are already hourly wage, for example. But then I think the biggest issue I wanted to say is, thinking long-term, I'd love to see us really assessing what the high incidence corridors are. Portland, San Francisco are doing this. They've identified high injury corridors. And they're looking at both mitigation in the short term, but also long-term solutions, which typically involve engineering. So I'd love to see us doing a cross-disciplinary team between police and public works and community services to look at these safety issues and address both the behavioral issues and the engineering issues, as well as the things that our traffic cops do well, like DUI enforcement and stuff like that. So others might have other things to say about this, but that was my two cents. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Katie, for your public comment. Our next public commenter will be Adina Levin.
Mayor and councilmembers, Adina Levin, speaking on the item and building off of what Ms. Beruzzi said. And in, in looking at the item about hiring back some police officers for the traffic unit, I must say, I was not a hundred percent sure in the staff report about whether this is a proposal to immediately hire back these officers or whether this is information that is going into the budget where the decision is going to be made separately. But, but at any rate, wanted to build on what Ms. Beruzzi said in terms of wanting to encourage the city council to take a deeper dive into the functions of the police department and to have a community conversation about what those functions should be and what things that are traditionally done by police officers are, you know, being done the best way that they should be and what functions that are done by police officers might, what those goals might be best served in other ways. And in the last year with the killing of George Floyd and Biona Taylor, there's been a real, you know, national rethinking and about ways of doing things that were traditionally done by police. And in terms of traffic enforcement, there are cities around the US and, including in the Bay Area, where the city of Berkeley, the city council has a direction to do traffic enforcement, not with police officers. For disclosure, I'm participating for Menlo together in a group that is majority people of color and is looking to do some community education around the history of policing and then on alternatives to policing for a variety of purposes and really do hope that Menlo Park as a city does engage in that topic and consider whether the purposes for which police officers are used, whether that is the right way to serve that need or whether there are other and different ways of serving the need. Thank you.
Thank you, Adina, for your comment. Our next public commenter is Kevin.
Hi, my name is Kevin Gallagher. Thanks for having this opportunity to speak today. I was hoping to speak to, actually, the same point as the previous two callers. Item K two, attachment B, I think, and my understanding of this is that the decision today is just on whether or not to add back these two library positions and that all of the other positions, including the police officer positions, will be discussed at a later time. So for today, I just wanted to kind of reiterate the previous callers and say that for me, this seems like an opportunity to, I guess, assess if this is something that we really need. Three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars is not nothing, and I think I'd be curious if we, if we don't already have access to information about, you know, what traffic safety in Menlo Park has been like in the past year or so, since the Traffic Enforcement Division was cut. I'd be curious to see, you know, what, what differences and outcomes there have been, if any. And then maybe have some conversation about, like the previous caller said, how we can think differently about traffic safety in Menlo Park. I know there have been a lot of discussions in the past about, you know, council capacity and staff capacity, and those certainly seem like things that might involve a lot of work. But, you know, at least as a starting point, I'd be curious to hear some conversation about, you know, is this something that we need at all? And then if it is something that we need, you know, is this how this, how that need needs to be met? You know, are there other options for, for meeting those safety needs? And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for public comment on items K one and K two. Seeing no further hands raised. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and thank you to Mr. Gallagher, Ms. Levin and Ms. Beruzzi for the public comment. So what we're going to do here is, as I said, we're going to go around the dais and I'll call. And when it's your opportunity, you can ask questions, make comments, do with, with the time that you see most fit. And then after we go around and everyone has the chance to comment at least once, then I will specifically ask for a motion, and then we will, we will target the discussion after that on, on that, that motion. So with that, I'm going to turn to Councilmember Taylor to see if she has any, any questions or comments on this agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor Combs, and I do have questions and comments on the agenda item. The first one, actually, I'll go to K two first, just on the attachment. And that is, is it, is it possible to actually to have the discussion about making any additions or changes to our police department when our chief of police is present? And I'm not sure when that will happen, but that's my first question.
I see Mr. Pagaros and the city manager has both come on, so I'll, I'll let you guys fight for who goes. But, but I will just add the point that, yeah, there seems to be some confusion as to what we're, we're doing here, and I think part of that, again, is, is reflective of that, that additional memo that at least listed those additional, additional positions and not just these community service positions that we're discussing tonight. So I'll let you guys, you guys take it from there.
Well, I'll start off and then I can turn it over to Nick if he has additional comments to make. So the attachment B was really just, it was provided to give the council and the community an early look at our thoughts and ideas about positions that we would be bringing back to the council during the budget process. We're probably, we'll be releasing the budget in early May, so we're just a few weeks away from that. And we just thought we would spark your interest, if you will, in what the staff is thinking about. And just for public, for the good of the public, it is ultimately the council's decision whether to add those positions or not. Tonight, we're only bringing you the three childcare positions, the two supervisors and the one manager. And we're asking for an amendment to the salary schedule, and we're asking for the approval of those three additional positions. I do appreciate that, and I know the new police chief appreciates the thoughtful comments that we've heard from the public, and the police chief will be present when that budget discussion is held. So, and Mr. Pagaros, if you had more you wanted to add to that, then please do feel free to contribute.
Yeah, thanks for that additional clarification. Okay, so back to, to councilmember. So to be clear, the action that is being asked of council tonight and that council may make is, is only with regards to the community service positions that Mr. Reinhardt has presented. There is additional information in the staff report listing out additional positions which staff would like to engage in a debate with the discussion with the city council and the community about, about their, their need and feasibility, feasibility going forward. But that, that will not happen tonight. Tonight, we're only talking about the community services positions, although I do very much appreciate the, the public comment. So with that, I'll turn it back to Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. And so I will only speak about the the three positions. One of the the concerns that I had just about moving, I believe, someone who's currently on staff into the interim position is that's my understanding that that person does not have a background in early childhood education or child development. Is there someone else on staff that does that can be considered for that interim position?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. When you refer to an interim position, are you referring to the interim Assistant Community Services Director?
Yes.
I, we do not have someone on staff who currently has the qualifications and experience in childcare and early childhood development to move into that role at present. However, the person who will be serving in that interim Assistant Community Services Director role has quite a bit of background in staff development, training, human resources, personnel development, and is only intended to serve for no more than 12 months in that role. While we focus on developing our internal staff for for advancement, I think with the hope that leadership positions would be filled from within at the end of that process with that real focus on developing our internal staff.
And is there any opportunity here to actually hire any of the or rehire any of the staff that was laid off?
I believe there will be. The individual circumstances and qualifications and skills and classifications of the individual employees all all come into play when it comes to filling roles on an interim basis or or people being promoted or hired back. But I do know that the movement that is created when leadership positions are vacated and people internally move into them or new leadership positions are are created and people are promoted into them, it does have, it does create additional opportunity throughout the organization. And as noted in the attachment, the memo, there the intent is to propose in the context of the budget process a substantial restoration of of those staff positions with the new fiscal year budget as well. So we're very much focused on that, and we're very much paying attention to it as we pivot to reopening city facilities, hopefully this summer.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. And I have a just a follow-up, well, not really a question, and that's that's just a concern just about what happens internally with the morale of staff if you are moving folks around that have been with the city for a short period of time as opposed to looking at employees that have been with the city for five, 10, or 15 years.
Well, that certainly can have an adverse impact on the morale of staff if they feel that they are ready to move into and advance their career in within the city, and they feel that they do not have the opportunities for that. And so that's definitely something we very much want to avoid happening and to mitigate what has happened as a result of the pandemic and the very substantial budget reductions, which affected basically everybody in the department by making sure that we're focused on providing those opportunities as soon as we are able to our staff who are ready, have have served well, and would like to, you know, kind of take that next step.
Thank you again, Mr. Reinhardt. There are just a couple of other things that I wanted to bring up, but I could always wait until other council members chime in. But I'm just looking at, I know in the staff report, it talks about structural change is necessary to provide for proper supervision. And for me, I look at structural change based on the salary schedule for childcare teachers, both one and two, being the bottom is $52,000 a year. So for me, structural change is about increased wages. And the wages of the two or the three positions that you're asking council to approve is quite substantially larger than what our current staff are making.
Yes, the the nature of the roles, you know, are different. I think I will agree 100% with, I think, the essence of your point, which is that educators in this country and locally can and should be compensated more for the work that they do. I think that's that's an endemic issue in society, and I will agree with you on that. Of course, there's a process that, you know, would need to be undertaken with the council, you know, to to have a discussion about that. But I think your point is valid.
Thank you. At this time, Mayor Combs, I will pass the mic.
Thank you, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Nash.
Thank you. So I guess my first question is, it seems there's a, I guess, can you explain how much of this is specifically for childcare as the staff report is focused on and how much of this is for future needs such as with the MPCC? And just what, can you explain the three positions that you are looking for? And also, if they're, I believe, well, and just how they came about, how you how this evolved?
Yes. So so these three positions really are to address critical needs in in the childcare programs, the preschool childcares, the after-school childcares, the summer camps. Historically, those the supervisors in those roles have also through subordinate supervisory personnel at the coordinator level, also nominally had the senior center in their portfolio and some other programs. But again, they were supported by a coordinator who really was kind of running the day-to-day of the program. And that's the nature of a of a robust program that delivers a wide set of services to the community with relatively limited personnel resources. And at the supervisory level, you know, there is an expectation that, you know, the portfolio, although certainly these positions are focused on childcare, and if you wanted me to put a percentage of their time on it, I would probably put it north of 80%. If not higher, depending on the needs of the given day. But certainly, among all of us in the department, we're not that large of a staff. You know, all of us have to, you know, pitch in and make sure that we have some supervisory support even for programs that do have a line-level supervisor in there, such as the senior center or the gymnastics center, for example.
And so you've got the two positions, the two supervisor positions. Have those existed before? I'll just say, according to the org chart, it looks like those were frozen. Was that those were frozen as part of the budget cuts as part of the pandemic?
Yes, I believe that was a series of of reductions or a freezing positions that had become vacant over a period of a couple of years. So there is there are is no budget authorized for those positions. Those were at the coordinator level. However, the qualifications for licensure and permits for a childcare site supervisor are such that it is extraordinarily difficult to identify, recruit, and retain qualified personnel in in that classification, which is why they're being brought forward as a supervisor.
Okay, and how much, how much of, well, I guess, just bottom line, I am supportive of the two childcare positions, supervisor positions from everything I've read and heard. I do not, to me, the manager position should be moved on to the attachment B and reviewed as part of a more holistic view of the city departments. And I guess, since it seems that we're talking about K one and K two, as far as K two goes, I would like to see, and this is, I would like to see a current org chart for all departments so that we can, as we look toward the budget and look at all of the different requests for new positions, we have some context to put that in. And I know that's not specifically Mr. Reinhardt, but just generally, I would like to see the entire organization so we can get some feel for what is there. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nash. Councilmember Mueller, you are going to be next, and your hand is up, so. So it all works out.
So I respect the positions of my colleagues. I just have a question for the CEO manager, Mr. Reinhardt. Thank you for the presentation. CEO Manager Ron Robinson, you support these additions to these hires, this addition?
Yes, Councilmember Mueller, I do. I think that they are critical to the to good organization and management of the childcare facilities. And the council's made it clear that childcare is a high priority for them. I want to make sure we're doing a great job.
Yeah. And so I, and candidly, my my thinking on this is that pandemic, at least for the moment, is coming to a close. It looks like, I mean, very hopefully, as we move into the next year, vaccination rates will continue to stay strong and and hopefully, I mean, we've held steady yet. We've been between like 0.97 and point 7.3 or the over since 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 vaccination started. And as and I know some other states are having trouble, but we seem to be holding steady and the variants are here. So I think it's really important that we have childcare staffed up and ready to go to support the recovery as more and more people need to use it. And we need to do that in a way that's responsible toward those kids. So I I support staff's recommendations. I don't have any reason to doubt the city manager and Mr. Reinhardt. So I I support the recommendation.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor Combs, and thank you, Mr. Reinhardt, for your presentation and for getting through, hopefully, the worst of the pandemic with the childcare center intact, which is no small undertaking. So thank you. I've been digging a little bit into childcare, and I think we all, well, I know that the the council, before I got on, you know, really committed to childcare, and I think that's great. And I've been looking at kind of this idea of what we really need are childcare directors, it sounds like, like, we might call them like what supervisor, library, or community services supervisor, but they're really childcare directors. And from my my understanding, that childcare directors should really be kind of totally dedicated to childcare. So I'm just, I'm a little nervous about the 80% figure. And I I appreciate wanting to be nimble and wanting to to tack on, you know, utilize the the response, utilize our staff the best we can. But because it's such a critical job, and I'm sure there's always things that aren't getting done in childcare that need to get done, I'm just, I'm just nervous about having that split the job. And so I was looking at the org chart earlier, too. And I just want to make sure that that's that's dedicated. When I read read the staff report, it talks, even in the introduction, it talks about how, you know, this is a immediate and critical emergency to to add these positions. But it looks like there's the two positions that are kind of of that immediate kind of vein, and then the one position, which is more of a strategic position. So I just wanted to ask you, Mr. Reinhardt, if if we weren't to add back the strategic one now, could that wait to be part of the broader discussion that we're going to be having, kind of, we'll call it attachment B, about larger staffing issues? Because I certainly don't want childcare to fall out of compliance, but I don't want to feel rushed into making larger organizational decisions that add, you know, headcount and change the direction of an organization when we haven't even really talked about how much money we're going to be putting back into staffing, what our service levels are going to be. I know that the council last year went through a lot of really difficult decisions about staffing, and I want to make sure that we add back in a very thoughtful and and careful way. So I guess my question for you, Mr. Reinhardt, is if we address the kind of immediate need of the two supervisor positions but hold off on the manager position, can that buy us time to introduce the manager position to what Vice Mayor Nash was proposing into kind of the larger comprehensive conversation?
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Of course, whatever the city council directs is is what the staff will implement. If you're asking my perspective on whether we can defer that third position, the manager position, the answer, I think, is is no. I think the risk is is too great. As I mentioned in the presentation, the two childcare centers and after-school and summer camps have previously been supervised by four personnel. And so what we're proposing here is is three in a bit of a more strategic configuration and and elevating two of those personnel to a supervisory role so that we can attract and retain a more qualified licensed personnel on those positions. But of course, whatever the city council directs staff to do, that's what we'll implement.
Okay, um, thank you. My my other question is more related to attachment B again, which I understand is just a placeholder as kind of an info, it probably would have been, I if I, an info item might have been a better characterization of it. But I was intrigued by the, but since I think we're commenting on that now, on the city council member capacity request at the back. And my ask would be, as we go into the budget, is it possible, like, how do we get those scoped and part of the conversation when we do get to the budget? So again, Mr. Reinhardt, this isn't necessarily for you. This is more of a city manager, Jerome Robinson, question. So that so that we don't miss our chance of getting extra capacity when it comes.
Thank you for asking that question. That's a great question. And and I will say, first of all, that I more than anyone have been delinquent in documenting individual council member requests, but we can try and put together some assessment for you. We we do, I do spend substantial time every day, every week on individual city manager, city council member requests. I think with the modification to district elections, one of the interesting outcomes of that is that the public knows exactly who to call with code compliance issues. And it's not code compliance. They call their district representative. We have a great code compliance team. I'll just do a shout out for them. But usually residents want the opportunity to talk directly to their council member, which I completely understand, but it, the amount of time that we are spending on the issues, which are all important, has really also creating some dysfunction internally. And it is also probably, if we don't have a good prioritization for how to approach each of those requests. But I really appreciate you bringing it up tonight. We'll we'll try and put together a scope and an assessment of what those positions would be doing.
Okay, yeah, it just for the staffing, because, yeah, that's fair. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. So I see Councilmember Taylor's hands up, but we're going to follow my procedure, which is where I'll provide my my brief sort of comment, and then I will specifically ask for for a motion. And then we can further discuss, but I want to discuss under the framework of 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 an actual motion. So I'm I'm supportive of of the the staff's requests. You know, again, similar to to Councilmember Mueller, I think in in this scenario, if Mr. Reinhardt and the city manager are saying that these three positions are critically needed to a, in a, in an area of which I know hiring can be an incredible challenge, and of which there there is a regulatory scheme and licensing scheme that comes into play. If they say that these are positions that they need, then I don't know from what's standing, I would sort of question that. This is, therein comes the the adage of of you hire good people and let them do their jobs. And if you think that there is And if you think that there is some need to go in the weeds, then, then maybe you've not made the right decision in hiring. And, and, and you should, should, should re, relook at that. But in this scenario, I don't know what standing I would have to, to question the request. And again, like I said, I trust Mr. Reinhardt and the city manager. And so I'm, I'm supportive of the request as, as, as framed by staff. So with that, I'm going to ask for a motion and then, and then I will, and if Councilmember Taylor has a motion, she can certainly make it. But then, i- if not, then I'll just ask her to hold. And to, we have a council member who has made a motion, and then I'll acknowledge her for additional comments. Councilmember Mueller.
I'll make a motion to move the staff recommendations.
Great. So, so we have a motion on the floor from Councilmember Mueller, Councilmember Taylor, and now if you want to provide additional comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. My additional comment or question is just, just looking at the org chat, the chart, why not just unfreeze the two positions that we froze? And that are the two recreation coordinator positions for one, for the MCC campus and the other for the BHC DC campus.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. That's a good question. I think I addressed it a little bit earlier, which is that we've the recreation coordinator job classification poses recruitment and retention challenges because of the licensure and permit requirements for folks who need, who serve in childcare site supervisor roles. And that's one of the reasons why we've had challenges with that classification in that role. And that's why the positions are being brought forward at the supervisor level.
I have a follow-up comment. Out of the existing staff that work as childcare teachers, there's no one on staff that's qualified to fill that role. And I will not be supporting this because I see this as being unfair to actually people who are working directly with children. And if the majority, their position, a certain percentage of the job is not even dedicated to childcare, is dedicated to another field. It really, I just see this as being problematic. So I will not be supporting this.
May I, before you comment, Mr. Reinhardt, ask the city attorney whether or not we can comment on individual employees' performance currently in their jobs? Because I think we're starting to step into areas included both by, by our relationship to the city manager, but also some legal issues of whether or not city council members can actually comment on the performance of current employees. And I, that's all, with all due respect, Councilmember Taylor, I respect where you're going in your thought process, but I just want to be very careful.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a point well taken. The agenda item and the open, open nature of this agenda item would preclude us from speaking about employees' performance. But you are free to discuss whether or not utilization of existing employees is appropriate, subject, of course, to the union's approval, following me and confer obligation.
Thank you, the city attorney. Mr. Reinhardt, were you going to add something? Please.
Yes, I just wanted to thank the city attorney for that additional commentary. And just to respond to Councilmember Taylor's very valid concern, that certainly there are childcare personnel who I believe would be competitive for the supervisor positions. And I would strongly encourage them to, to express their interest in it by applying for it, should the council approve these positions tonight. And again, the intent is to grow and develop our staff internally to move forward in their careers. And, and the staff positions being brought forward tonight are a pathway to doing that. But absolutely, internal staff absolutely should apply for these positions and they will receive absolute consideration.
Thank you for that initial clarification, Mr. Reinhardt. That, that actually was the question I had, whether, whether this was something that internal, already sort of hired staff could, could apply for. So without, I'll, I'll second Councilmember Mueller's motion, and so we can, we can bring the city manager, excuse me, the city clerk on to, to conduct the vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Nash.
I'm sorry. I thought you were doing one more go around. So I would certainly like to make some comments.
Okay.
And that is, I guess I'd like to, my understanding, I guess, I am still not sold that we need the manager position at this time. I, I fully agree that we should be considering it with the rest of the headcount. In describing it, I believe you said that it was for, would include, the responsibilities would include the interim services and also the MP. Both of those are not immediate needs. They're definitely needs. They're not immediate needs. I, I guess I, right now, I am not voting for this, for this motion because I believe we only need to put two of the positions forward right now, not the third one. Can you please explain if there's something?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for the opportunity to clarify. These positions are not related to the MPCC interim services. That commentary about that was just to advise the council, remind the council that there are a number of substantial projects that the department needs to focus on, including that. However, the interim services really doesn't affect the childcare programs to any extent, with the exception of the Onetta Harris Community, Community Center Youth Center, the after-school program located in the OITC. It's going to move into some portable facilities also on the same site. But otherwise, the childcare program is not particularly engaged in MPCC interim services.
I understand that. I thought that you, I thought that that was one of the rationales for the manager position. Yeah.
Certainly the manager position because they would not necessarily need to be engaged as the day-to-day site supervisor. They'd be a little bit more at liberty to participate in management level projects, of which the interim services operations are a part. But these positions are absolutely focused on the immediate and critical needs in the childcare program right now.
Okay. All right. And then I guess the one other question is, so are the, I guess these are the supervisors. You said that that would be about an 80/20 split, I believe. Is that actually, and that's permissible with licensing, I'm assuming?
Well, with the, again, to sort of estimate that if the supervisors are participating in department projects to advise department-wide teams or citywide teams related to reopening facilities, of things of that nature that can be performed, you know, from where they're working in the childcare centers, then yes, to that extent, they may be engaged in those things. And certainly would be a small percentage of their time. However, I do hear your concerns and Councilmember Wilson's concerns about, you know, making sure that the supervisors are focused on the childcare program and that's what they're for. And that's absolutely where their focus will be. And again, the manager position is critically important in that matrix in that, again, there's coordinator level positions, for example, at the senior center. And those folks would probably just be reporting straight up to the division manager. An organizational chart doesn't really capture the, somewhat of the fluidity of the, of the way reporting lines work. But the childcare center is an exception to that because we are bound by certain license and permit requirements as far as site supervision. We would certainly adhere to that.
Good. I will just state, I'm, I would be, I'm happy to vote for two of the positions. I am not convinced on the third one yet.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, I just, Mr. Reinhardt, I just want to make sure my understanding is clear. We're creating, we're taking two positions that were frozen and we're actually increasing those titles for recruitment. And then we're not just doing that. We're creating a third position so that there's the opportunity for advancement within the childcare center. And that's all based on the recommendations that you and the city manager have actually for the capacity that we need to run that center. So we're actually creating opportunities for current employees to actually advance in their jobs. And we're not just doing it with the two positions, but we're adding a third. And we're not just doing it with two positions that were frozen, but we're actually increasing the titles on those positions even further. And we have people in house who we think are competitive of all those things. Is all that correct?
Yes, that's accurate.
All right. Thank you. So I'm, I'm going to stick with my motion. And I'm, and the reason why I'm going to go with this, again, as, as I've commented and Mayor Combs has commented, I don't have any reason to believe that our city manager and, and Mr. Reinhardt would be recommending these positions if they weren't necessary, especially given where we are in our current budget situation. I, I have nothing to believe that they're not. I actually, and I, and I candidly, because of where we are in our budget situation and where we are right now in our, in, and currently in our, in our, and in our childcare program, I think, I have good reason to believe that if they think they're necessary, they're necessary. But I also think it's actually good for our organization. On the flip side, that if we need these things and we do it, that we're actually creating this opportunity for advancement for current city workers. That's not a bad thing. I think that's a good thing. So I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with my motion. And if it gets defeated, it gets defeated. And then a secondary motion can be made to just support whatever my colleagues would want to do.
Councilmember Taylor, and then I'll go to Councilmember Wilson, and then I'll ask for the vote.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Just going back, this is to authorize the city manager to address an immediate need of critical staffing for childcare programs. I'll be supportive of the two positions if it's 100% dedicated to childcare. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. And of course, as I said earlier, whatever the city council directs, so that's what staff will implement.
I'm just going to, Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you. I have to say, this is not an easy one. I, I, I agree with Councilmember Taylor. Sorry, that was suspense. Councilmember Taylor about, I would like some assurance that these two positions are going to be dedicated. I don't know if it's in the job description or something to say that they're going to be dedicated to, to childcare. It makes me nervous to have childcare directors, which is basically what they are, distracted by, by other things. And then in terms of the manager position, if their, if their, if their main thing is overseeing the, the two coordinators, which are doing the, the gymnastic, the aftercare and the senior services, those seem to be running though. So I, I'm, that's why I don't understand why we can't wait two months to have this part of the broader, or even in a month, I think we're talking about this as part of the broader conversation. Because that doesn't seem to be touching childcare directly right now.
Okay, let's, there's a motion inside, let's, city, city clerk here.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I do have one hand up in the attendees list. They may want to comment on this. May I reopen?
Yeah, you can call her.
Thank you very much. So you're going to be taking one public commenter. It is a phone number. If you can, please state your first and last name. The phone number ends in 3859.
Thank you, and, and, and thank you, Judy, for bringing that up. Pam Jones here. And actually, my comment is, is about the additional policing. I want to make it clear that in the past, I've always supported the police department and the number of staff that they need. Now, I realize that this is actually going to end up in another place, but something to think about. I think it's really important that we have citizen oversight and that we start that on the front end rather than waiting until we've ramped up the police department to whatever we think it should be. I would also like to make sure that, that we know exactly what they're doing and where they're going because there has been numerous reports of them being in East Palo Alto. And if they're in East Palo Alto and we need more staff, then there's, you know, there's a problem here. The other piece that I have mentioned several times, and that is, it's, it's time for citizens oversight. I think that, you know, like I said, it's important that we start that process now on the front end, so there's not issues later on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And I did have one more hand raised. So this will be the final public comment on items K1 and K2. This is Heather Hopkins.
Hi, good evening, city council members and staff. I'm a childcare owner, a preschool owner. And I did just want to make sure that the city council understands that, according to my understanding of licensing guidelines, I know the, the licensing manual like the back of my hand, unfortunately, that childcare center directors are not supposed to have any outside duties that interfere with the duties specified in the licensing manual. And so I believe it would be out of compliance with licensing, which is state licensing. County actually has nothing to do with guidelines and licensing. And so I just wanted to make sure you knew that before proceeding. I would be worried that there would be a compliance issue. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your comment. And Mayor Combs, if you'd like, I can take the motion on the floor. So I have a motion by City Councilmember Mueller and a second by Vice, or by Mayor Combs to authorize the city manager to address immediate and critical staffing needs for the childcare program supervision as proposed by staff. Any further city council questions or discussions?
Councilmember Mueller.
I'll make an amendment to my motion that the city attorney check to make sure that the positions and duties of the positions of all three are in compliance with the state state code and regulations regarding childcare, childcare workers. So, and running, running a childcare center. So I'll support the staff recommendation of all three hires and then ask for city attorney review of what those job duties are to make sure that we're in compliance. So is that acceptable to the secondor?
Oh, yeah. Okay, but let's proceed to the vote.
Thank you. So by roll call vote, City Councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor?
No.
City Councilmember Wilson?
I don't think we heard you, Councilmember Wilson.
Sorry, no.
Vice Mayor Nash?
No.
And Mayor Combs?
Yes.
The motion fails with City Councilmembers Taylor, Wilson, and Vice Mayor Nash dissenting.
Okay, thanks. So I'll entertain another motion, not additional discussion. I think our, our positions are all clear, but I will entertain an additional motion. Vice Mayor Nash.
Thank you. I move that we proceed ahead with the two supervisor positions and recommend that we bring the manager position back as part of the comprehensive budget. Thank you.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Wilson. You're muted.
Can I get a friendly amendment in there? To per, I liked councilmember Mueller's idea of checking with the legal compliance with the city attorney on those two positions. And yeah, I would second that.
Accepted.
Okay, we have a first and a second. I do, I see councilmember Taylor and councilmember Mueller. Please, councilmember Taylor.
I just wanted to clarify, is, does that mean that the position is 100% childcare?
I think that the, the city attorney will review and make sure that, that the positions duties are in line with whatever the licensing requirements are. And so that, that's, that's where we are. I don't know. So yeah, so I think that's where we are.
My, my direction, as I heard it, is to review the position description and to revise it as needed in order to come into compliance with state licensing requirements.
Which we, we are not certain it is in some way out of compliance, that that has not been proven by any stretch of the imagination. So, so, so just to be, but the, the city attorney will vet that. So, councilmember Mueller and then councilmember Wilson.
I was going to ask, and it's all due respect to my colleagues, if we could separate the motion out, the two motions, one on the two, and then the second motion being one on the other, on the manager coming back later. I would like to vote for the two, for the two hires. The issue I have is that the manager coming back later, I respectfully have a hard time voting for that. I, out of a real place that I feel like I'm second guessing staff on, on what their recommendation is. So if we could split it into two motions, I'd be very grateful for that.
I would be fine with that. To your needs.
Thank you.
Okay, then councilmember Wilson. Okay, okay, so city clerk Karen, so then we'll take this motion currently as being an approval of the two, the two positions, can you manage your supervisor? The two positions. And then, and then we'll deal with the other position coming back. We'll, we'll, we'll let that motion be made. But this motion has been amended to just focus on an improvement, the two, the two, the two positions. Mr. Pogeras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for some clarity for the record, if I understand the council, the Vice Mayor Nash's motion, it is to add two full-time equivalent personnel in the library and community services department at the library and community services supervisor level dedicated to site management of the MCC and the CDC. And, and authorization of amendment of the salary schedule to include library and community services supervisor as recommended by staff.
Vice Mayor Nash, you have.
That's, yes, I'm trying to put forward what staff had recommended for those two positions.
Yeah.
Are we amending the salary schedule at the same time or is that a separate motion?
I don't, is city clerk Karen, is it, is it, because they're across two agenda items? Is it, is it, can we take care of the amendments to the salary schedule in this motion?
Or do we? So my understanding would be that we could include it if the city attorney has any further recommendations. As far as I know, that we could include it because it is agendized.
Okay.
I agree.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure that we, the resolution 6620, as it currently is written, has two errors in it. One is that the library and community sciences classification title manager is missing. And the second one is that the salary is not, does not reflect what is in the report. The minimum salary for the manager is listed on the resolution as 126553. And in the report is 121835. So just to correct that.
Right, Mr. Councilmember Wilson.
I, that's, but we're not doing the manager now, I believe. I think the resolution now is modified to just do the supervisors to be consistent.
Mr. Pogeras, okay, I think that he was also going to point that out.
Yes, he was going to clarify the updates to the resolution. At least. Okay, so the motion I have on the floor is by Vice Mayor Nash with a second by city council member Wilson to proceed with the two supervisor, supervisor position in the library and community services department dedicated to site management to the MCC and CDC, and for the city attorney to confirm that these positions are in compliance with state laws and regulations related to childcare and amend the salary schedule as such. Any further city council questions for discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, city council member Mueller.
Yes.
City council member Taylor.
Yes.
City council member Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
Mayor Combs.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. And then, did you want me to state the second motion? Or did you want to further discuss the second motion related to the management position?
I'm going to let Vice Mayor Nash verbalize it and we'll go from there.
Thank you. I actually questioned whether we need one or not because we, but just, you know, would encourage staff to bring it forward.
I think that that's fair. I don't think there's, yeah. Okay, so unless there's some objection, I do think that's fine that there's general direction that that, that position will be included in the other positions that, that will be presented. Okay, all right, with that, we're going to move on from, from this, this agenda item to our next regular, regular business item, K2 adopt resolution number. We did that one as part of this, that, then we're going to move on to item K3, direct on cost, direction on cost recovery policy, library overdue fines and recreation user fees. This is continued from March 9, 2021. Here to introduce the item is that library and community service director John Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mayor. We meet again. So this item is, yes, it was continued from a previous meeting. Based on direction the city council gave to staff at the February 23rd meeting to revisit the cost recovery policy, consider incorporating an equity statement or a clearer one in the policy to also address, so council direction regarding library overdue fines and recreation user fees through that lens. See if I can get this PowerPoint going here, my apologies. So the recommendations based on that direction are to amend the cost recovery policy to include a new equity statement to eliminate library overdue fines. And there's a number of pilot programs that staff prepared in response to city council's direction that are first city council's consideration this evening. All four of these pilots, staff is bringing them forward, seeking council's direction whether we should further implement them and bring back the details to council in the context of the operating budget deliberations. So we just kind of want to vet it with you to see if we should spend the time to develop the details further, if the concepts will kind of meet with your approval. And the first is to expand recreation program scholarships, the need-based ones, citywide, currently they're only offered for a smaller subset of populace. To pilot suspending resident user fees entirely for recreation programs in music, dance, movement and introductory, introduction to sports for young children ages zero to five, so eliminating the user fees for those programs entirely. That's another pilot. A third pilot would be to partner with local health clinics, health providers, or primary care providers to provide health and wellness prescription, recreation passes for at-risk residents, residents who maybe, for example, are battling diabetes or other conditions for which some of the recreation programs might actually be part of their treatment. And then to provide passes which the clinic, the health provider would issue. And I'm sorry, there were three of the pilots. And the fourth bullet is just reiterate the detail that should council direct staff to bring back any of these, then we would develop and present the details to you with the operating budget. The proposed equity statement is, would be inserted in the cost recovery policy. And it would, it was adapted from the National Association of Public Administrators equity statement as well as some existing equity-related statements in the city's budget documents. That the city of Menlo Park provides services and infrastructure that contribute to quality of life for all Menlo Park residents. In so doing, the city strives to balance the resources and requirements of each area of the city in an equitable manner for all residents in all neighborhoods of the city. The city of Menlo Park prioritizes social justice and decisions that affect residents' lives, the fair, just and equitable management of all institutions serving the public directly or by contract, the fair, just and equitable distribution of public services and implementation of public policy, and the commitment to promote fairness, justice and equity in the formation of public policy. The purpose of incorporating this into the cost recovery policy is to provide additional direction and policy guidance from the council to, when identifying where services should be or what cost recovery level should be assigned to be guided by this statement in addition to council's direction. Moving on to the overdue fines, library overdue fines, multiple Bay Area jurisdictions, library jurisdictions have eliminated these fines. They've conducted multiple studies that show that these fines disproportionately impact low-income residents and communities of color. The studies have also shown that the administrative and staffing costs to track and collect library overdue fines actually exceed the value of the fines collected. For Menlo Park, the projected library overdue fines revenue in the current fiscal year is pretty marginal, it's $42,000. And probably the actuals would be lower than that because of the pandemic. The city managers, a proposed operating budget is due to come forward to the city council on May 7. So should the council direct us to eliminate the overdue fines, we would bring the details on the approval to you in that context, probably to take effect July 1st with the new budget. Moving on to the three pilots, the first would be that there are current need-based scholarship or fee assistance programs already in place. Others, a one-to-one scholarship that provides fee waivers and subsidies to recreation programs, or 58 participants in the past year. The gymnastics program, when it was operating, offered a reduced hourly rate and 15 participants in the past year had partaken of that. And then the aquatics program, which is operated by a third-party operator, they provide free or discounted youth swim lessons based on need to 271 participants over the past couple of years. So the pilot would be to expand scholarships citywide for income-qualified residents, which would reduce financial barriers to access. The initial proposal, the concept would be like a 75% fee reduction for residents who, for example, show proof of other public assistance or sort of demonstrate the financial need. The nominal participation fee of 25% is a recommended best practice by the National Association of Parks and Recreation. However, the city council could also direct staff to eliminate even that nominal fee if desired. Another sort of conceptual proposal would be that qualified participants could also receive up to one class or activity per season at this, at this rate. However, again, city council could, could direct to other levels. So one potential maximum scholarship value would be 250 per individual or 500 per family. That's kind of middle of the road there. But we could bring back the details to show different rates if the council so desires. And that's the last bullet point says. And then the next pilot project would be to suspend user fees entirely for recreation programs targeted to children ages zero to five years. Again, eliminate barriers. There's similar precedent in, for example, the free public library programs like Storytime, Arts and Crafts for Children, Language Learning for Children. Those are already provided for free to the public. So this particular pilot would be kind of in line with that, but targeted to very young children. And in this case, very much focused, the recommendation would be to focus on music, dance, movement and introduction to sports. Some of the other programs like gymnastics or childcare have a much higher level of investment in care. They're not recommended to, and there's also private sector alternatives that we would not recommend completely eliminating user fees in those programs. And summer camps as well, as noted here in this bullet point. And then the third one, again, as I described briefly, these would be recreation prescriptions in the form of passes to city programs focused on health and wellness, facilitated by a local nonprofit health provider, oh, sorry. And then be redeemable for participation in those programs. So those are the three pilot concepts, and we're happy to explore others. And again, what we're asking is general direction on whether we should develop those further. And then here again, oops, are the recommendations before you regarding the equity statement and the cost recovery policy, eliminating library overdue fines, and whether we should further develop any of the pilots. And that's the presentation. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Reinhardt. And I'd like to personally deliver my apology that, that this item has been postponed, I think, two times at least. But, and I know there were at least a couple or one very late night for you waiting to give a presentation that, that you did not end up having to give. So let's, let's, let's bring on the city, city clerk and go to, go to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item K3, direction on cost recovery policy, library overdue fines and recreation user fees, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in from a cell phone or a landline, please press star nine. So last call for public comment on K3. Seeing no hands, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, city clerk Karen. So we'll go around the room and let's start with councilmember Wilson. And we will, again, you know, comments, questions, and then I'll ask for a motion after everyone has spoken. And then, then we'll, we'll target our remaining comments, questions in connection with that motion.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Reinhardt, and congratulations for fourth times the charm, I guess, getting this one off the agenda. So I can just go through, will you put the recommendations, please, back up on the screen? Because if you want, I can just go through them. So I know there's one about waiving library fines, and I'm fully in support of that. Eliminating library overdue fines, I'm a yes. Amending the cost recovery policy to include the new equity statement. I know that equity seems like something that needs to be fleshed out a little bit more. And with the real, the real process kicking off, I'd almost want to, my thought is, let's see what comes of that, because I don't want to develop something and then go back to it. And that might be a good exercise to do as part of real, I'm not sure. That was my thoughts. And then in terms of the pilot, I do appreciate this being like different ideas. The one that I'm most interested in learning more about would be the scholarship one. And the priority for me would be for residents with a financial need and then making sure there's, you know, it's easy for them to sign up and not embarrassing or really treating them with dignity. So I'll defer if, if there's other cities that are doing it, but that's kind of what I'd be looking to get out of it. I'm actually, I appreciate you bringing the other, the zero to five free, free program and the prescription to us. I'd be okay not doing those at this time. But I'll, I'll be open to hearing what my colleagues have to say. And then the last thing, oh, that's just summing everything up. One, one more point about cost recovery that I wanted to bring up had to do with the solar arrays. On page, on the staff report, G4 point, actually, this is an old staff report. I kept recycling every time you, it kept being punted, I would change the number on the top. Sorry, but it's page. Sorry, but it's page fifteen where it talks about the solar arrays. If there's a way to broaden that to electrification permitting. So that if we're talking about someone getting a battery installation or a solar array or a heat pump. Or, you know, all the different things that we're looking to, to promote and incentivize people to do. That's an area in cost recovery that I would be interested in making as easy and expensive and, and attractive as possible. So that, that would be my feedback.
Thank you, council member. I believe Deputy City Manager Justin Murphy is listening in. I think this kind of falls within his area. And so I believe he's already made a note of that. I think you were talking about page fifteen of staff report, K3.
Yes, so correct, where it has mid-cost recovery thirty to seventy percent. Right now, it just says solar installations. So that's where I was, I'd be in favor of broadening the scope of that cost recovery item. To really address kind of our electrification desire and even like EV charging, like things that are kind of in the climate action plan. That we want people to do. And then I'd also be open, you know, I don't know what the consequences are, but even a lower cost. No, higher cost recovery, which, which direction, the direction that makes it as attractive as possible. I don't know if it's high or low.
Probably lower, because the higher the cost recovery policy, typically the higher the fee we charge to the user.
I knew it was like not, okay, got it. Thank you. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. I'm going to call on myself next and question Mr. Reinhardt. With regards to the pilot, suspending resident user fees for children zero to five. And so, so the process, you would allow non-residents to sign up. Right, or for these that currently charge a fee. But, but, so non-residents would, would just pay a fee and residents wouldn't? Is that how you see those programs going in the future?
That, that's what I think staff's proposal and intent would be, that this would be focused on Menlo Park residents. As far as like any fee deferral, a council could direct us otherwise, but I think the focus would be on residents, yes.
And so, but, so would there be an actual priority in signing up for residents in addition to their, their fees being waived? Or suspended? Or would it just be like, if you've got, like, I don't know, if it's something that has thirty slots, then the thirty-first people that, that fill it up irrespective of their residency would get that spot. And then if you're a resident, you don't have to pay a fee, and if you are not a resident, you do have to pay a fee. And, and, but you wouldn't really, in the signing up process, actually sort of just restrict it to, to residents, correct?
It's certainly possible to do it either way. I, I think some of it depends on how you kind of structure the program signups and the nature of the program. I am aware that, you know, there are a number of folks who are not technically city residents. Who reside in unincorporated Menlo Park, who've become accustomed to accessing city services. So, you know, in this model, if the city council were to direct that, you know, maybe have to be Menlo Park street addresses, you know. I, I think we could implement whichever combination that the city council directs. We have the ability to do that.
Okay, cool. So my direction are mostly in line with, with Councilmember Wilson's. I'm certainly in supportive of eliminating the library overdue fees. I would say, I think three pilots is too much. And so I would say that, yeah, let's focus on one pilot and the one that sort of is most interesting to me. And seems the possibility of having the most impact is the citywide need best and need-based recreation program scholarship, expanding that. I'm, you know, fine with the current equity statement, but, you know, I'm totally fine with, with sort of waiting. If, if there is a sense that, that, you know, after we go through the real process or some other process that, that, a better equity statement could come in out of that, then I'm totally fine with, with that process. Okay, those are my thoughts. Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, so I'm fine. I follow my colleagues' key on the equity statement. I mean, the other option is to adopt it tonight and then amend it. To through the real process so that we have one, unless someone has something objectionable in it. I'm fine eliminating library overdue fines. I actually think it's, I actually support the city, citywide need-based recreation program scholarships. But like my colleagues, not really, not, don't want to proceed with the other three. And I'll tell you, I mean, basically, the reason is, I remember back in two thousand ten time period, two thousand eleven time period. Where, we were, that period, economic downturn. And at the time, there was a big push that was still taking place when I joined the council to get to a full cost recovery system. And the difference between then and now is that we were going through an economic downturn. And we still had a parks and rec services to deliver as opposed to now, where we don't. And it was a tremendous strain on the city budget to try to figure out how you could continue to deliver those. And so there was a ton of work. I remember a ton of work to try to get to a full cost recovery system. And, and, and I also compare that to the California State's park system. And other, other systems where that actually run on enterprise funds, separate and apart, that have to balance out. And so because of that for sustainability, and then, and then combined with the reality that in Menlo Park, we have a good portion of our population that not only enjoys our park and rec. But candidly, has childcare, private childcare workers taking their kids to enjoy those. Seems odd to me that those folks would partake of a free program. So I just think it makes more sense to try to be as sustainable as possible. For, and, and have the strength, strength there of a full cost recovery program. With the plus of adding to the cost so that you can provide equity through program scholarships. City need-based program scholarships, and I appreciate staff wanting to look at expanding that project as appropriate. And I think that's important to do, we should look at that. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I'm supportive of the comments from my colleagues. And I do appreciate all the work that you've done, Mr. Reinhardt. And I do appreciate the statement, and I agree with Councilmember Mueller to have something there until we can adopt something a little more robust and agreed as far as staff. When the real comes in to do our training, hopefully sometime this year. And then also, I actually like all of the pilot programs, and I know that they, we can't do all of them. But I hope that you will keep the ones that we aren't going to use now for the future, because I do think that they're needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Vice Mayor Nash.
Thank you. I also agree with everything that's been said. So I won't go back through those. I do have two other questions or comments. And that's, the first one is, there's a lot of redlining in the, in the user fee cost recovery policy. And I'm wondering if that actually, taking out all of the details really is advantageous to staff. I could see it going either way, and I'm assuming you took it out because it was, but it, it seems like there may be some. It leaves a lot more up to staff as they're making these decisions. And we definitely want to make sure that residents are treated the same. It doesn't matter who, which staff member you see for paying fees. And so I'm just wondering, will we have consistency with this new redlined version?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I think much of the, the redline changes were really either Assistant Administrative Services Director Dan Jacobson, or possibly Assistant City Manager Nick Preggers. Can kind of speak to that formatting change. That was more of their, their recommendation. So I couldn't speak to that with the level of detail that I think you're seeking. And I see that Nick has popped on the screen.
Thank you for the question, Vice Mayor Nash. The, I think one of our overriding attempts over the last two years or so has been to focus some of our procedures on the true policy questions. And that was the, that was the emphasis behind the redlined document that you, that you see there. To your question about uniform implementation of fees, our fees are set by the master fee schedule, which is a matter that comes before the city council. And staff does not have discretion to modify those city council-approved fees. And so one of the challenges with the procedure is it is, as it, as it is currently before the city, if the city council leaves as is, is that there is a disconnect between specific items that are listed in the council procedure and then fees that actually exist for services. And so this is really intended to be a policy document, not a, not a manual. And again, we will do what council requests us to do and, or directs us to do.
Thank you. I actually was just looking, so will, I, I will put it back that since staff is the one who actually implements all of this, I just want to make sure that it works for staff. So, and I was just concerned that I do hear, and I'm sure, you know, that there is, you know, there's inconsistencies depending which person you go to with various issues, because things aren't as well specified. And so it looks like we're taking out all of the specifications. And so just wanted to ensure that that was, that that worked. And so whatever, whatever staff thinks is, is great, as long as there's, that it makes it easier rather than harder. And that there's consistency, realizing that individual members can't make the decision on their own. But just so they have the framework upon which to make a consistent decision. And then my one other comment is just, is there any way to somehow make, take a look at these programs, see which ones, just sort of how much residents use some of these programs. With an I too, making it so that residents who are living here, paying taxes, whether directly or through their rent. Are, have, that, that the programs are less expensive to them than for non-residents who are not paying into the system. As far as when we're thinking about the cost recovery.
Yes, Vice Mayor, that's a great observation. Actually, the way the fees, user fees are currently structured. There typically is a lower rate for residents and a somewhat higher rate for non-residents. And within the, the cost recovery policy and the master fee schedule, that's, that's almost across the board for all recreation programs. Don't quote me on that, but I'm pretty sure it's across the board.
The ones that I've seen, there's like a dollar difference. So I actually would, you know, wonder whether the city could either just charge, you know, go to higher cost recovery for non-residents. Or perhaps offset some of the resident fees with a, with a higher non-resident fee. So just, what is the differential? And I have, would entirely leave that up to staff, but just say that I personally would be interested in either having this, the city able to recover more costs or have it be used to lower resident fees. And nothing more specific than that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just, just for the council's information, that, that would, could be considered as part of the development of the operating budget. Of which the master fee schedule is a part, and that will be coming forward to council in the next couple of months. So we could certainly provide some information back to the council in response to that request.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. And are you looking for, can you remind me, a, a motion or a general direction here? You're muted, I think.
Sorry, I was having a screen issues here. I was going to put this back on the screen for you. So we would require a motion to eliminate the library overdue fines. And we would need a motion to amend the cost recovery policy to include the new equity statement now. And if, if the council directs, you know, to come back again for amendment, maybe in the context of the NLC real program. The pilots would be just kind of general direction to, yes, go ahead and move forward and develop it. And I think what I heard was that the citywide scholarships is, is one that the majority of the council expressed interest in developing now. However, perhaps revisiting the others at a later time.
Okay, cool. City Attorney Doherty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to clarify that the motion on the elimination of library overdue fines would not be a final motion until the master fee schedule comes back to you in the form of a resolution. So it is, it is a motion to provide direction to return with the master fee schedule and a resolution.
Thanks for that, that clarity. Councilmember Mueller and then Councilmember Wilson.
I want to thank Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Nash for clarifying that the intent of the user fee cost recovery document force would still include these eliminations, even if we're not proceeding with those pilots. I actually am not comfortable with the line-outs. I, I, and then partly is because I remember the pain that went into doing them and reviewing them. So I, I don't, I mean, while I'll support the equity statement being added, I would like to line these, the edits of the deletions not to take place, but rather us. If there needs to be some items that are adjusted or don't exist anymore, bring it back to us modified. But I think it's transparent to, and also transparent to understand that there's a policy related to the master fee schedule that's included in the cost recovery document. So that would be my preference. Thank you.
Okay, is, is that a motion? Can we promote that preference to a motion?
Okay, I'm being respectful to Councilmember Wilson. I'm happy to move that we amend the cost recovery policy to include the new equity statement. We eliminate other library overdue fines. We cast that at the present time, staff move forward to develop the citywide need-based recreation program scholarships. And that, but that those be, the amendment for the cost recovery policy would include only the new equity statement. And not the, not the, not the deletions included in the document in the staff report. And that those other pilots could be brought back to us at a later date per council direction.
Okay, cool. Thanks. Councilmember Wilson.
Yeah, can I make a friendly amendment about the electrification and broadening the solar array cost recovery?
Is that, can we do that tonight? Or is there, I would ask the city attorney just if we can do it tonight, because I didn't. I don't know if it's really under the Brown Act, really, there's a notice around that.
Councilmember Wallace, do you mind repeating your question?
Yeah, it's whether page four fifteen of the cost recovery policy. Where it says building and safety and solar installations are marked to expand the building cost, to expand that item to be like cap-related electrification permitting. To incentivize people to install batteries, heat pumps. Different, I mean, it could come back potentially, but I'd like to move that forward since we're trying to get people to shift.
Yeah, I do agree that we should come back with that. The proposed revisions were not noticed in the agenda or the staff report. And so the public has not been apprised of the discussion. the public has not been apprised of the discussion on that topic.
Okay, so then just direction to staff to bring that back. Vice Mayor Nash.
Thank you. I wanted to clarify what I believe is the case where on the two pilots for the kids zero to five and the recreation therapy, that those no work is going to be done on those until further council dis direction, but that those would stay on someone's, you know, future possibility list, but nothing would be done at this point.
Parking lot. That was the intent. And that was the intent of the motion to put it in the parking lot.
I just wanted to make sure it was clear. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, but we do not have a second. Is there a second out there? Okay, Vice Mayor Nash, City Park, and we have a first and a second.
Yes, thank you. So I have a first by City Councilmember Mueller and a second by Vice Mayor Nash to add the elimination of library overdue fines to the master fee schedule update, include the new equity statement to the cost recovery policy and amend after the implementation of the real program and also direct staff to retain the remainder of the policy, direct staff to focus on the citywide need based recreation program scholarship pilot and return other pilots to the parking lot.
Cool. Really quickly, City Councilmember Taylor, is this good with you? I should have checked in.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay, cool. All right, you can proceed, City Park.
Thank you. Any further city council question or discussions? Seeing none, my roll call vote, City Councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
City Councilmember Wallison. Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
Mayor Combs.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Right, thanks. All right, with that, we'll move on to item K four of regular business approved framework for use of American Rescue Plan Act funds. This is continued and updated from March 23rd and April 6th, 2021. Here to introduce the item is Assistant City Attorney Nick Poggeras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, we're seeking city council guidance on a variety of options that may come into play here as we're finalizing our budget process. As you know, the, sorry. Specifically, whether the council wants to provide staff with direction on whether the funds will be used for structural or ongoing sort of services and 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 programs in in part to replace as a on a short term basis, lost revenue that that resulted in service reductions in the pre in the about 12 months ago or so, when we were going through budget for the last fiscal year and for the current fiscal year, or if the council wants to provide us with one time direction to use the funds for one time discrete projects or grants. Just as a frame of reference here, the expenditures are authorized under the American Rescue Plan Act to occur either in fiscal year 2021, 2021, 22, or all the way through December 31 of 2024, which is in fiscal year 2425. So we have, we have some time to make use of these funds. And and we were simply seeking direction this evening on how the council would like to see those funds in in the 2021, 22 budget. So just a quick overview, a direct aid to the city of Menlo Park based on population, the city was is will receive 6.5 million, $6.531 million is the estimate. The American Rescue Plan Act has allows for city council to determine how the funds will be used with with some restrictions, but but in general, large, there's a wide latitude for use in funds where whether it be to replace lost revenue due to the pandemic investments in infrastructure, grants to other organizations such as nonprofits. But explicitly, the funds may not be used to fund pensions. So while the city does have an unfunded pension liability, the federal law strictly prohibits us from using these funds to make additional payments towards towards the pension funded liability. So again, this just highlights the potential uses that city council may may provide. I'm just going to skip over this. There really, when we look at what what decisions need to be made, part of the decisions, well, the primary time time constraint is December 31 of 2024. It spans multiple fiscal years. City council could look at giving us direction tonight to include some percentage of the total $6.5 million in next fiscal year's budget, either for structural or one time expenditures. And, you know, Mr. Jacobson, our Assistant Administrative Services Director had put this option together is just showing a front loading, spending the majority of the money next fiscal year, but then spending additional funds in future fiscal year, future fiscal years. One of the, one of the reasons for this recommendation is that we know that our, for example, our TOT revenue is not expected to increase or was much lower than what we expected for the current fiscal year and may not increase at a rate that is consistent with the previous recession. So we expect that there will continue to be some suppressed revenues in that area. And so this money, these monies could be used to 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 offset that impact. And so this just again highlights the the framework guidance that we're seeking from council. I will, I do just want to add that this, the budget is, while the budget is definitely not approved by the city council until it's approved by the city council, we do strive to, we do need a spending plan, whether it be a preliminary or a fully approved spending plan by the beginning of next fiscal year, which is July 1. We are on a very tight timeframe to turn around our budget at this point, typically decisions like the master fee schedule, cost recovery, city council priorities and one time monies like the American Rescue Plan. Typically, that guidance would be given to staff in February. So we're sort of starting a little on the late side here. And the only reason I mention that is that at this point in the budget process, we're not seeking specific guidance. We're not asking the council to to give us a direction to include millions of dollars or whatever, whatever the amount is on specific programs. We're really seeking direction from council on what type of contingency budget would you like for us to include in the 2021, 22 budget? Because we anticipate that that will take a great deal number of conversations with at the city council to fully explore all the options that may be available for use of those funds. And that may last into next fiscal year. So at this point, we're really seeking a guidance on whether you would like for us to include a contingency in next year's budget using A R P A.
Thank you, Mr. Poggeras, for the presentation. City Corcaren, let's call for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak, not on this item, on item K four approved framework for use of American Rescue Plan Act funds, please engage that hand feature at the bottom of your screen. If you're calling from a cell phone or from a landline, please press star nine at this time. The final call for any public comment on item K four. See, no hands raised. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, City Corcaren. So really quickly, before I go around the virtual days, Mr. Poggeras, I want to kind of make sure I'm understanding what you want from the council. Like, is the idea that, because these are very sort of big picture concepts. And so is the idea that there is actually something that we that there is an emotion and we vote on like very specifically that you have that guidance or that direction? Or is it, you know, you're sort of kind of like teeing up a conversation for the council in connection with the American Recovery Funds? And sort of seeing where there is seemingly some consensus or direction or seeing if if like, you know, we're all over the place. And just, I just want to make sure that like, because this can be a very wildy discussion. And I just want to make sure at the end of it that we we land in a place or provide you with some some information or direction that has value.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I specifically what we're seeking is, or what our budget team is seeking is if the council has thoughts on whether we put the full full amount in next year's budget and then we figure out how to spend it. I just I it's a little challenging sometimes to identify what proposals we should bring to the city council. So I'm just hoping that we can get some direction.
Totally, totally fair. And I think that 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 issue is is a lot more sort of solid, right? In the sense of like, do you want this sort of needed out over a couple of sort of fiscal years? Or do you want it all sort of front loaded? I think that that's sort of probably easier versus the the question of whether you use it for one time issues or whether you try to use it to replace, to replace revenue. So I'm not going to call on anyone. Who wants to go? Who wants to go first? I think this is a better way to approach this. Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, so I got it. I have to admit, when I saw the sign, it confused me a little bit. But then I know I understand this question of do you want us to use what looks like one time monies for ongoing obligations? To suggest use for ongoing obligations with the idea that there's going to be funding in the future to kick in for those ongoing obligations that just isn't present right now because the current state of the closed economy. I don't have a problem doing. So here's the thing is, I think that there'll be, so what I would say with the I would want the in the budget, the 6.4 million segated segregated, so we know when we're using it. If we're using it for an ongoing obligation, that that be that be segregated out with the so that we can identify it, talk about and then talk about and ask questions around when we expect revenue to kick in to pick up that ongoing obligation. Like how foreseeable it is for that. I don't have a problem doing that in this circumstance. But I do want to make sure that we check that the foreseeability is revenue kicking in behind it. So we're not in a situation that that we we did that and then we're either waiting that we did that and then there's no revenue to continue to support that program. But it may be that we bridge it later when we get there. But I just want to be able to know and go through that analysis. I also think you know, I also think that there should be a portion of it. I think there's should be options set aside so that the council can weigh one time, one time expenditures as well. And so I think there's a very good chance that the council may decide they want to use some of those items for one time expenditures related to actually battling the pandemic, which would help us get into a situation where the economic recovery would come faster. So I don't have a problem. I don't have a problem with staff saying, I mean, what I guess would be good would be saying, okay, here's where you could, you know, do the normal budget and then take the 6.4 million and say, here's an opportunity where you could go ahead and use some of that 6.4 million. This is what that does in terms of increased capacity. And then identify whether that be a one time use or an ongoing obligation. And you could do that a number of different places within the budget based on the wish list of staff. But then council can weigh that also against whether or not they want to make some one time, one time allocations. Is that helpful, Mr. Poggeras?
Yeah, yes, Councilmember Mueller, that what I'm thinking is just just mechanics of it is, and this is more than the council probably wants to know, but almost setting it aside as a separate fund so that it's very clear and distinct when money comes out of that fund into the general fund. And then the question is whether it's ongoing or one time. So that that will spark that question and that discussion.
Right. And that way we can also weigh those one time obligations against those increased capacity choices and whether and also ongoing obligation choices. So I think that for me, for me, that would make the most sense. Because that way we'll be able to keep track of, you know, what we what we spent from the bonus.
Councilmember Wallison.
Yeah, thanks. And I think I'm pretty aligned with Councilmember Mueller on this. I was so for me, I see this money kind of as like two major uses, I guess. One is kind of bridging our revenue shortfall and getting us like over a hump for a couple of years, maybe a year or two. And the other would be, you know, addressing some some hardship in our community. And that that's a discussion I don't know if we're going to, which is more like a one time thing, which I don't know if we're going to, I don't think we're going to have tonight about all the different things we could do or who we could help with that. But in terms of the bridging, so I was just doing some really back of the envelope calculations, which could totally be terrible. But I was looking at going back to attachment B and agenda item K two of kind of like staff's positions that they're probably going to be bringing forward to add back. And I was like, I think I counted up about $4 million. I don't know if that sounds at all accurate, Mr. Poggeras. And again, I only counted it once and I did it in my head, so it might be wrong. So anyway, so let's say we we know that they're going to be asking potentially for like $4 million to get us back to a certain service level. And it looks like this year, we're kind of down 4 million from like next year, if we don't have any of the surplus, if I'm doing my calculations right. So like, so like from where we think will be next year to where we what we need for next year, it looks like we're actually not going to be in terrible shape without the surplus dollars. But I think a contingency amount of, I don't know, $2 million for this coming budget cycle. And I'm literally just spitballing and making that number up. It could go higher or lower. But my guess is my calculations are not accurate. And there might be additional needs that come out. And per my earlier kind of request to City Manager Jerome Robinson, I'd like to scope some of the council member requested staffing positions as well. So I'm kind of looking at it as what do we need for kind of next year's, this upcoming budget? I think if, and Mr. Poggeras totally correct me if I'm wrong, but we might not be in terrible shape, assuming that the that the estimated revenues kind of go our way. So and then having a contingency to give us a little room and then returning to the conversation of, okay, now that we've made it over that, we've bridged that, what are we going to do with the rest of it in terms of one time money or like even waiting a little while, not waiting on some of the helping people for the one time money. But I don't know if we want to use it all on that or then save a little bit in case the economy doesn't go our way. So those are kind of my top level thoughts. And if they're totally crazy and my numbers are wrong, please correct me, Mr. Poggeras. Because like I said, I like did it in my head very quickly.
Councilmember Wilson, thank you. I, I think I, I'm fairly confident I understand where you were heading there. If I might just sort of state it in a way that, in sort of like typical budget language. I think what I hear you saying is that the first priority for the ARP, the American Rescue Plan money is to close any, any deficit that may, to do basically what we're doing today, next year. That might be one, that might be one consideration. And then everything above that would be more of this contingency, contingency style modeling. I don't believe that we will, I apologize to the city council. It is, you know, and as I mentioned earlier, in the budget world, all of these decisions would likely have been made in January and February. And so we're severely behind schedule. And I'm just getting, growing more and more nervous about how we, how these items get added into the budget. And what I'm thinking at this point is that the ARP money may very well be something that we address in July or August. Just, just by virtue of how much information we would like to have in order to have those discussions. So I'm almost seeing it as potentially a moot point, what goes into next year's budget. If the council is supportive of what Councilmember Mueller had shared, which, and sort of my, my, my suggestion that we put it into a separate fund and then move monies out as the council sees appropriate. That may be the most practical at this point by way of just physically getting to a budget document by the end of the year, unless the council desires otherwise.
Just, just a quick follow up on that, Mr. Mr. Pickers. To some degree, doesn't, doesn't the funds have to be kept separate? And there has to be a specific accounting, since there are some prohibitions on what you can do with it. You have to be able to at least, right, say that you didn't send this, you didn't provide this for a sort of meeting pension obligations, right? So in certain way, doesn't, isn't there a requirement, a base level requirement of segregation?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would say that it is, it, it's how, if the council decided to use the funds to to give to community grants or to reopen the gymnasium sooner than we otherwise would have. That all is basically general fund money. And it, so it doesn't, it's not technically segregated. We would have to definitely provide an accounting of how that money was spent. I don't know how other cities are doing it, but my, my sense is that there may be very large projects, like infrastructure projects that the council could say, okay, we need $6.5 million for this project. Let's put it there and then that settles that issue. I, I don't know how other agencies are handling it.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I'm following. So it's possible then to, I just want to understand, Mr. Pickers, that I understood it correctly, to kind of make the budget like almost like protect, pretend like we don't have this money for a second. Put together the budget, given the services that we think we want, like probably kind of conservatively. And then see where we're missing, if there's a gap. And then use some of the surplus fund to, to fund that and then save the rest of the surplus fund or, or cut more if we want. But then kind of patch it with the surplus funds and then use, and then talk about what we're going to do with the rest of it. Kind of at a later time. Is that, is that where you're going?
Yeah, I, I, I think so, Councilmember.
I mean, I, that, that makes total sense to me. So if, if that, if we're allowed to do that, it, I didn't real, like that to me is a good out. So I'd be in support of that if that's possible.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Yeah, I'd also be in support of that and sort of like pretending that we don't have it, right? And, and build the budget based on a needs and obviously not a bare bones budget, but, but certainly a normal budget. And then, and then we can, you know, sort of assess. So I would be supportive of that, that approach. Vice Mayor Nash.
Thank you. So I also would be supportive of that. I think that we definitely want to keep it separate and be able to carefully track it and be able to report out, have it very transparent to the residents, what we're doing with it. And I actually am not in favor of using it for revenue shortfall. I hope we don't need to. And I would, I would like to see it used for some sort of one time purposes. And believe that we should go out to our residents and actually ask them, have community, a community conversation, a study session. And, and get input from our residents, what they think would be beneficial and make decisions. You know, have a discussion after that, but get input from our residents and our businesses and merchants and find out, you know, what are other people thinking? And as, as we're all thinking about this and seeing what happens over the next few weeks and, and where we land.
Councilmember Taylor, is there a comment you would like to add or question?
Yes, and thank you, Mayor Combs. I am actually supportive of having, of going out to the residents to see what their interests are. I did not have a chance to go back and look at the public comment from the last time this was on the agenda. But I do believe we did have some input. The other piece is just, I don't think we took any input when we had the CARES funding. It definitely, definitely wasn't the same amount. It was just under $500,000. But I think it would be good just to have that information public so that it'll help with moving forward. If we do have a study session or if we do get more interest from our residents to have input on how this money is being used, that they can see how we use the last funding that we received. And I am definitely in support of having this money in a separate fund for accountability. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. I would only to, and again, I'm, I'm again, not, not opposed to the idea of going out and engaging residents. But, but in theory, didn't we sort of do that exercise when it came to goal settings and priorities, right? Residents came and said, hey, these are the things that are priorities to us, this, whether it's a quiet zone or other things that came up. In theory, wouldn't we like, if now we have this additional pot of money and if, as the Vice Mayor is saying, she doesn't want to use it to cover revenue losses, it is going to go to sort of like one time projects. Wouldn't we just sort of default back to those priorities or projects that, that residents have surfaced to us through the priority setting process or even through, through other processes? Wouldn't that be where we start? I think my concern would be like, we're sort of, you know, then creating like two lists, right? And so this is the list of, there's just the stuff that people want, right? You know, it's a speed reader on Willow or whatever. And then we're going to have a separate sort of listing connection with the, the American Recovery Funds. Or maybe they intersect. I don't know. But that, that would be my, my one sort of slight sort of feedback. But to be clear, I'm not opposed to the idea at all. And it would, would be supportive of that. Councilmember Mueller and then, and then Councilmember Taylor.
Yeah, I don't want to get into a big discussion of how I use it tonight, but I did want to leave some, a, a point of thought for my colleagues. And, and that's that we can go out to the community, certainly, and always want to hear from them. But in thinking about this, I am very interested in trying to reach people and help people who are very disconnected. You know, I, for instance, our, our homebound senior community, it's actually kind of shocking how many haven't been, haven't been vaccinated. When you look at the numbers, people from the digital, you know, people affected by the divisional, digital divide throughout the city. People who are suffering from mental health issues don't typically show up at city council meetings with someone to advocate for them. So in looking at this, like I really, I think it's important we ask community, but I also think I really want to spin our public policy hats on and think about who's really left out in the conversation, who needs help. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I just wanted to, to follow up on what you said earlier. For me, the intersection is COVID, which makes the funding different than when we were discussing goal setting. And so, so I'm looking at it a little differently.
That's a very fair point.
Thank you.
So is, is that, have we given the direction that you think there is a couple of key things like, right? Certainly, you know, segregated out, we want to be able to clearly sort of document where every sort of penny goes. We're going to, in theory, build a budget not based on this, 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 this money. And, and we're going to look to some sort of public engagement process with regards specifically to to how we might use these, these funds. Is, does that all sound good to you, Mr. Pickers?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. All right. With that, I think we'll move on to the next item, which is informational items. I think, I don't, I can't remember the last council session when we actually got to information. Let's see if I even remember what they are. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to, to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, city staff member or a member of the public may request to make comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. With that, let's call for a public comment on the informational items, City Park Karen.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So for any member of the public wishing to speak on our information items, L1 through L4 regarding city council agenda topics, LCS Services Facility Program and Event Reactivation Update on the TMA Feasibility Studies Implementation Plan and Next Steps and the Housing Element Advisory Committee Formation. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. Our first public commenter will be Adina Levin.
Mayor and councilmembers. Levin, Menlo Park resident. And let me see, on the library and community services item, this is something where the staff recommendation, which is to wait for services restoration until a point of herd immunity. That seems to be both very a blanket statement in terms of treating services like gym or like, like indoor gym, which is a high risk activity, to be the same as other kinds of activities where there's a really a missed, mixed level of, of risk. I noticed that the library services for the county of San Mateo are starting to open up with a set of limitations, like you're only allowed to be in a building for an hour at a time and social distancing and so on. And so I am wondering whether it makes sense to have some nuances in the reopening, taking into account levels of risk, maybe taking into account the populations served. And that was my comment on that. With regard to the, the Transportation Management Association, I, I don't know if that, there will wind up being a discussion of that, a pretty robust item at this hour. Being a member of the Complete Streets Commission, I will withhold, reserve my personal comments until the Complete Streets Commission gets to address this tomorrow in depth. I will share that I think that having the, the city consider transportation demand management, participating in a transportation management association as, as something is, that's a really great direction for the city to follow. And I have other questions and comments that I would, I'd like to make in the context of the Complete Streets Commission. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next public commenter will be Pam Jones. And Pam, if you could please state the agenda item that you're commenting on, that would be super helpful. Thank you.
Good evening again, council, and, and thank you, Judy, for your instructions. They're really helpful. I have, I have a couple of things. I think it's important to pay attention to the information that's on the county website, particularly the parts about what percentage of people have been vaccinated. And some of the information is updated daily. So really need to pay attention to that because we're actually doing well in Menlo Park. And actually, Bellhaven is now 51.9% vaccinated, which is absolutely amazing. The other piece is, I have a real conflict about how we treat our seniors. And I really think that we need to have an expert in elder care. It's not geriatrics, but it's another name. To better understand, would the seniors be better served going back to their home, their original home, even if it's only for six months? Because we don't know until Thursday, you know, what the latest plan is with the community center. But if it would be healthier, emotionally healthier for them to go back home before we ship them over to Ariaga. And the other piece about that is maybe even rethinking sending them to Ariaga, because you know, that means we're adding to trans, to the traffic. And you have to negotiate the times of day when the traffic's the heaviest. And which is, you don't have to do that now. I do want to also say that I really want to commend the staff that has taken care of the, the seniors. They, they get food regularly during the week by a drive by and which is absolutely phenomenal, as well as what's delivered at home. So we really know what's going on with our seniors from that standpoint. And I really appreciate that from the staff. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, so our next public commenter is Mila Zelka. And again, if you can just please state the agenda item you're commenting on.
Information item number L3.
Much appreciated.
Yes. Hi, council. My name's Mila Zelka. I'm the CEO of the nonprofit Manzanita Works with a mission to support workers and worker family welfare. TMAs can take lots of different forms as we learned together in the Manzanita talks in 2019. Solving local transit problems that stem from regional dilemmas requires a novel approach. And I'm pleased to share with you that our subregional TMA, the Ravenswood Transit Consortium, formed in 2020, launched programs and includes Menlo Park employers in its membership. I sent an email to you last night. However, I'd like to highlight two clarifications. One, we currently do do outreach to all Menlo Park employers. And our membership reflects private, public and nonprofit stakeholders in your city alone. The proposed targeted outreach to small and service sector businesses was offered in response to a staff request. And we have the flexibility on the size, structure and focus of any targeted effort you would like us to prioritize, should you choose to partner with us. The second point I wanted to highlight is regarding the report's comparison of our organization to the Joint Power Authority commute.org. One uses taxpayer dollars. Um, one uses taxpayer dollars to deliver services within the county, whereas ours is a non-governmental entity that acts as a clearinghouse, leveraging diverse funding streams, including private dollars to solve local gaps. As shared publicly in the past, we look forward to partnering with commute.org as a provider of public services. In addition, we are able to fill gaps in service that have the ability to be open to non-consortium members. Our essential worker commute shuttle program is open to all essential workers, including your city staff. Your support of our organization beyond an endorsement would bolster our existing work and would be much appreciated, especially since our novel approach was shaped by the leadership of Menlo Park community members, including the Ravenswood Teacher Association. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. And our final hand raise is Lauren Bigelow. And Lauren, if you could, please let us know what item you're commenting on.
Good evening, councilmembers, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on item L three. My name is Lauren Bigelow, and I am a housing commissioner with the city, but am here tonight as a private citizen. Some of you may know this, but my background is in affordable housing and the nonprofit space. I'm currently working as a fellow with Partnership for the Bay's Future, which is very focused on how the housing crisis can be solved through regional efforts. It may not be immediately clear why I've just explained all of that, but the bottom line is that I very passionately believe in the idea that some of our biggest problems should be solved regionally. Housing and traffic management go hand in hand in my mind. In fact, I met Mila, the CEO of Manzanita Works back in twenty fifteen, when she was on the board of Alta Housing where I worked. And she was organizing efforts in her other spare time to build a strong base of educated, affordable housing advocates across the peninsula. I ran at least one campaign with Mila, and I could always count on her to show up, talk to everyone involved, and make sure that efforts were focused on equity. Her efforts always came directly from the community and ran through the many relationships that she had built over the years. Menlo Park now has the opportunities to benefit from that energy and those efforts, so I would really strongly support finding a way to have commute.org and Manzanita Works partner together on our city's TDM needs. That way, we can take advantage of the nimble nature of Manzanita Works that can uh, address the TMA immediately and commute.org's ability to facilitate the creation of services that help those with the greatest need through taxpayer dollars. To me, that sounds like a pairing that can't lose and will continue to serve us for a long time. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for public comment on our informational items, L one through L four. And seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, City Park Karen. Um, I can't remember who pulled what, so I was gonna go down the list, although I see, uh, in, in, start with L one. I see Councilmember Mueller's hand is up, so I'll, I'll acknowledge him.
I was gonna ask about L three, so if someone wants to talk about L one first, that's fine.
Councilmember Taylor and then Vice Mayor Nash.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Um, for L one, um, I wanted to um, just make a request to add the CRT funds to our agenda at some point, and in the near future, hopefully. Thank you.
Thanks for that request, and I know that the Vice Mayor and the City Manager are leading that up, and so, um, so I'm sure they will definitely note that. Okay, so, so was that the only thing on L, oh, one? Uh, uh, Vice Mayor Nash and then Councilmember Wilson.
So I actually um, was also going to request um, that we uh, get the CRT onto the list of um, near-term council agenda items. And I also, in the slightly more longer term, wanted to make sure that we get the um, discussion about police um, public safety and um, how we want to, just visioning public safety in Menlo Park on the agenda. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson, and then, then I'll acknowledge the, the City Manager.
Yeah, um, this is in no way a judgment on the requests that were just made by the Vice Mayor and um, Councilmember Taylor. Um, as a new council member, I, I read the council policies and procedures manual. Um, and I just want to know, I just want clarification on the policy to get items on the agenda. It's my understanding, if I'm being a rule follower, which I think is the current policy, um, you can get an item on the agenda one of two ways. One being you send an email to CCIN, much like uh, Councilmember Mueller did about his request. And two is you send an email to the mayor and the city manager. Um, I just want to know if there are other ways of getting uh, items on the agenda. I just want to make sure that we are all on the same page.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll take that. So, yeah, those two are definitely the right way. With CRT, it's a bit different because it's something that has been long discussed and which a majority of council has for some time uh, expressed a desire uh, to have an open session about, and it's something that has been the topic of, I think, a couple of closed session um, uh, council meetings. And so in that sense, I think it, it's a little bit different. I, I think it's, it's making sure that
Yeah, like I said, it's not about the merits of it at all. Yeah.
Yeah, but so in, in theory, like if it was a completely sort of novel item, then I do think that, yes, following one of those routes would, I, I mean, obviously, if someone wanted to just sort of bring something up in, in, in council member reports, it wouldn't be like we would pretend we didn't hear it, and, and especially if there, there was some consensus. But, but yeah, th- those two ways are uh, the formal ways to, to get, again, completely new and novel items uh, onto, onto, onto the council, the, the council agenda. And so, but, but a- a- again, like I, I think the CRT is, is, is a slightly separate situation. Yeah.
Um, regarding the council member reports, um, I just want us to be in agreement if that's a pathway to get an item on the agenda because I actually prefer seeing something um, like in writing. Um, but again, if that's the council's direction as a majority, then, then that, that is, I just want us to be really clear about that.
I, I would see someone bringing something up in council report as, as sort of, you know, then ultimately leading, leading to something written. Um, but, but, but yeah, again, I, I think that there is, that there is some, some flexibility there. Um, Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, I think that, so what's interesting is I think council member reports is actually sometimes your only real sure way of getting something to uh, to the agenda. Because if you go to the, if you go to the to some, a brown act partner and they say they don't want to do it, you know, then you're one person emailing the city manager. And so, and so, uh, and if you ask the mayor if they want to do it and they don't, you're, you're bummed. So, you know, basically, in councilman reports, you can ask everyone, hey, is anyone else interested in this? Like, do you guys want to hear it? People say no. You're dead on arrival. If someone says yes, then you can, you know, you, then you have two people. Uh, and it's always trying to get, it's always trying to get, I mean, can't candidly, I think the candidate used to be three peo-, you know, three people. Uh, but typically, if there's two people, you give them a shot. So, but I, I hope that's clear, but customer practice has been people can raise stuff in council member reports and ask if anyone's interested in it, but you can't really vote on it that night. So.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. I would just love to have the policies and procedures reflect that. So, uh, it's just, that would be my ask.
Okay, so as a, as a uh, complicit rule follower, I completely agree with you, Councilmember Wilson. So, but having said that, and so we would love to put the policies and procedures back on the agenda again. I think I, I feel duty bound though, and, and I genuinely appreciate the council bringing up the two items that they want us to agendize in the near future. Uh, and obviously support that. Uh, but we do have the, we have four meetings left uh, through May twenty fifth, so approximately six meetings. And, and those meetings are all running at approximately nine hours each. So we'll be looking for, to add meetings for those discussions in, in the next few weeks. Or juggling the existing agendas, but most of the agenda items on the upcoming agendas are either required or critical.
Fair call. And so I think, I think the default might be uh, to add meetings, and then that means that, again, those will be dependent on, on council members making themselves available, which, uh, in fairness to staff, has, has not always been the case, uh, available for, for additional, additional meetings. Uh, Vice Mayor Nash.
I just would like to add that I believe that CRT meeting is critical and well overdue. And now that we have the police chief here, that would be, this is a ideal time. Thank you.
I, I mean, wh- what are people thought on a, a special meeting? Just generally to, to talk about CRT and maybe in a general sense, some of the other policing issues and, and also to have a, a general introduction to, to, to the, to the new chief. Uh, Councilmember Taylor.
I'm supportive, Mayor Combs.
Okay, um, so, and I see, Councilmember Wilson, again, so, so again, so I, I'll say, you will receive an email that will ask you about your availability. And so, remember, remember that. Um, remember this moment when, when you, when you get that email. Okay. So, um, all right, what, what, were there other uh, issues about, about L one? Uh, was there to? Okay, so L, L two, library and community services. What were the, the comments, questions regarding that item? I don't, I don't remember who pulled it, but I know someone did, Vice Mayor Nash.
So I pulled it, and it's just, I think that um, we need to at some point, and perhaps it'll be budget, but I'd love to see it earlier, um, actually have a discussion of um, service levels and service priorities, and especially as um, I believe several people on council and um, public have stated tonight, just um, looking at the population served, the level of risk, and um, also just what we think the service levels will, um, how quickly people will come back to the various activities. And so I, I would like to have a discussion about some of this, um, some of these various services. And also just priority, prioritizations, realizing how much we have on our plate.
Thanks. Councilmember Wilson.
Yeah, I just want to um, echo that, but also to some of the public commenters, and I know one of my neighbors wrote in about um, reactivation as well, and kind of that waiting for herd immunity. Um, and kind of only when we're at a certain point, then we'll think about, you know, opening, and I know we need, you know, there's a sequencing. But when we are seeing our neighboring communities, um, you know, opening up their libraries, um, are there opportunities for us to add some things sooner than later? Um, and I, I don't consider myself a fairly risky person when it comes to COVID, but it seems like masking and distancing and limiting usage, and now with vaccinations, um, we need to start thinking about, you know, returning to, to some things that have less risk. Thanks.
Cool. Um, all, all, totally, totally fair points. Um, I, I, I think related is, in, in maybe the city manager um, could answer this question, or, or all of the staff. Uh, well, I guess in, in, yeah, in, in a few days, um, everyone will be able to get the vaccine in California. So I, I guess it, it becomes moot about, um, about who is considered a central worker or not, or who, who, who would be eligible. Again, like, I guess in a few days, we'll all be eligible. Um, so I answer my own question. Um, so a- a- again, um, uh, against the, the feedback from the council is generally to, to look for, um, um, uh, to be a, a little bit more on the, uh, a little bit more sort of willing to, to, to reopen things, especially if we're seeing uh, similarly situated communities do that with some of their services. Vice Mayor Nash.
Thank you. I just wanted to um, point out, just having read the newspaper articles, I don't have any other insight. I believe that how other communities are doing, um, the library reopening is that they're doing some days where the library will be open and some days where they'll have um, the curbside drop off, and they're not trying to do both at the same time because of obvious staff limitations, just resourcing.
Okay, well, we can definitely look into that. I think the concerns that we've been aware of is just the depth of cleaning and the cost of the cleaning. But we can, we can come back with a budget amendment and, and see if we can accelerate it. Thank you.
Uh, I'll go to Councilmember Taylor, then back to the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Um, just on this item, I just, I had a, a couple um, questions that can be followed up offline is, is that do we know the percentage of our essential service staff that have um, been fully vaccinated? And then the second is, I know we did um, pods for childcare. Is it, is there a possibility to do pods for seniors, you know, twice a week? Um, something, um, just so that they can have some socialization. It's my understanding that a lot of seniors have already received, have been fully vaccinated. Um, don't know what that number looks like across the city, um, and that is information I believe that the county would have as far as how many seniors in the city of Menlo Park have received a vaccine. Thank you.
Uh, Vice Mayor Nash, and then, okay, uh, Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, I think it depends on the population subgroup. So I had a conversation with the county manager, and about ten percent of, of homebound seniors have been populated. So it really, there are hard-to-reach populations of seniors that have not. Uh, those who have people in their life who can take them uh, to the doctors or can take them uh, to a, to a facility. Uh, those, those numbers tend to rise, uh, but the county does have those statistics and can share them with us. But I know people, I know folks think that, you know, there are, that we're doing really well. We're doing really well in some areas. Um, and, and there's been a lot of focus in some areas, but there are some areas that are still lagging pretty significantly behind.
Thank you for those comments, uh, Councilmember Mueller. Um, so, or, or those are the, all the things we want to surface with regard to L, L two. Um, okay, L, L, L three? Uh, Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Uh, my only comment on this was that it's, it's coming before the complete streets commission meeting, and so it, I think it would be better served on our agenda um, after they make a recommendation. Thank you.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, so what confused me about the staff report, we heard some of it in comment, was that staff report, the staff report indicated uh, alternatives that seem to me to be uh, set up to be one or the other and not both. Um, and candidly, I'm not sure that one or the other is appropriate, or even, and I'm not even sure. So, I mean, I've been contacted by enough people now that say some of the information candidly is uh, some of the information candidly may be incomplete, and then also why is it a choice of one or the other? Uh, when I look at a TDM, you know, commute.org is a very large organization. Uh, I, I wonder like, isn't it T, for a TDM to work, don't you want more of a specialized? I mean, it was funny, when we first started the Manzito Works conversation, the question at that time was, do you really want to start a TDM that's sub-regional and outside Menlo Park? And now it's like, well, you know, so I, I'm looking forward to what the complete streets commission has to say, but I'm also a little concerned about uh, a little concerned about how the information is going to be presented to them. And we'll take that into account when it actually does come to the council itself. And I wanted to be fair with staff. I respect staff's work on that. It's a hard thing to try to create something, uh, but, but there's been enough information that's come in, it's, that has made me think if there needs to be just a little bit more work on that staff report to, to, to present a, a clear enough picture. Thank you. if there needs to be just a little bit more work on that staff report to, to present a clear enough picture. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Any other comments? Okay, so then, L four, Housing Element Advisory Committee Formation Update. Councilmember Wilson.
Yeah, one of the suggestions or options in the staff report was to create a council subcommittee for the housing element, and I'm very interested in forming that, and I'm actually interested in serving on it. So I wanted to gauge the, it seems like something that would need to be formed soon, since it's kind of going underway. So I wanted to see what others thought.
This is, anyone want to, I have no objection to a subcommittee existing and you being on it. So, Vice Mayor Nash.
I would fully support having a council subcommittee, and I would actually love to see council members, Taylor and Wilson, on the subcommittee.
Okay, that is, is there, so we, Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I am very definitely supportive of having a subcommittee. I am, at this moment, cannot commit to serving on it just because of the amount of subcommittees that I'm already on.
City Manager Jerome Robinson.
Well, I would just ask that anybody who does volunteer, and I really appreciate Councilmember Taylor's comments. I mean, she, she is doing a lot of heavy lifting on subcommittees. But if we're going to have a housing element subcommittee, I really need to ask you to be available for meetings as they occur. We, we are sometimes in the position of trying to, for weeks, to schedule these subcommittee meetings, and it really slows down progress. And since the housing element has a hard deadline, I really want us to be ahead of the game and not, not struggling. So having said that, I think a subcommittee would be very helpful in providing direction to the staff, or at least feedback if the council supports that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm supportive, and obviously, we don't have to find it right now, but we only have one council member who's expressed interest in being on a subcommittee, and so that's, that's certainly not a subcommittee. And so, I just wanna, before we sort of move forward, see that there is at least one more council member that might be interested in being on this, this housing elements subcommittee. And, and I'm, I'm happy to do it if there is no one else who is, who's interested, but I'll go to you, Vice Mayor Nash, and then Councilmember Taylor.
Well, I actually was hoping Councilmember Taylor would jump in first. I'm very interested. I'm just also concerned about my current subcommittee commitments and I would do it if, if, you know, if, if more than, I'm very, very interested in that.
Mayor, Mayor Combs, if you have the capacity, I would love to serve on it with you.
Then that totally works for me. I think I'm usually responsive, right, City Manager?
Yes, you are.
So, so yeah, that's totally fine. Councilmember Mueller.
I was just gonna ask you, you guys, I mean, if you guys wanna do subcommittees, fine, but I would just caution my colleagues on the housing element to not get too far down the road as a subcommittee. So it's, you know, the, the issues with subcommittees on something like this, that really the whole council is gonna weigh in on, and there's gonna be a lot of community input. It could just, it can get hairy fast, so, but, but I appreciate you guys taking it on. So.
Yeah, and fair point, Councilmember Mueller. I certainly don't see us as, as making the major decisions, taking it on to ourselves as a subcommittee. But maybe a scenario where, one, providing a sounding board to staff, and also, and you know, then when this does come to, to council, having council members who are able to sort of frame it in a way from being closer to it, that, that could possibly be, you know, be, be helpful. But, but, but yes, certainly keep us honest.
Yeah, I see it as a very iterative thing, and I look forward to, if, assuming this goes forward on updating the full council kind of as we go along, not, not running.
Assistant City Manager Pagaris, or City Manager Robinson.
Well, well, I'll go first, and I'll just say, it, it may be that we'll need to drop one or two of the other subcommittees. I mean, the subcommittees do take substantial staff time, and I'm not trying to interfere with the council's commitment to the housing element. It's really important, but they, they, you know, some, we only have so much capacity, and the council only has so much capacity, so.
Yeah, thanks for that, and I use this opportunity, the extent to which, you know, I think over maybe the next several weeks, council members should think about their own subcommittee commitments and the extent to which they feel that they're, they're tapped out, or there are some that, that they don't feel that it makes the best sense for them to fulfill, or some subcommittees that they think possibly should not exist. Then, then I definitely think we should be thinking and willing to, to service that, you know, those observations.
Thank you.
Mr. Pagaris.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to add to City Manager Jerome Robinson's comment, one of the things that is very helpful to staff, and I believe to Councilmember Mueller's comment earlier, is having a very explicit sort of charge for the subcommittee's duration. What is it that, what is the role of the subcommittee? Sometimes when we're in the trenches, rolling up our sleeves, really working through some very heavy issues, it's easy to, it, it's, there's, there's always the opportunity that, that work is being done without, you know, sort of the full council being brought on board, brought along. And so, to the extent that we could, just to reiterate, we asked the council's subcommittees to establish sort of charges and purposes and duration, and I know that that's very difficult. But if, you know, to the extent that we could do it for this committee, it would be very helpful.
Yeah, totally. Councilmember Wilson.
Yeah, is that something that Mayor Combs and I, with staff input, could do offline and then check in with the council on?
Right, I mean, you may recall that back in December, we asked all the subcommittees to form and develop their mission and timeline, because some of them are short-term and some of them are longer-term. And we haven't, I don't think we've successfully completed that task. So we can include this one in working with the new subcommittee and then bring it back. And to be fair, I think some council members have indicated on those subcommittees that it would be best to defer that work to a later point. So we can, we can reorganize all the subcommittees in the near future on a meeting that is not scheduled for 10 hours.
Thank you, City Manager. With that, let's, let's move to City Manager Reports, or City, City, I did something wrong.
And I just have a real quick question. This might be for our city attorney. I'm not sure if we're establishing a subcommittee at this time, or if we're bringing this item back, or if we can establish a subcommittee at this time.
Yeah, I saw us bringing it back, but let's see what the city attorney says.
Perfect.
That's what I heard, along with the action that's already being brought back on the 27th, we bring back that as part of the motion.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. Pardon the interruption.
No worries at all. Okay, is City Manager's report?
I have no, nothing further to report tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Reports. Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I just wanted to report out that CCG had their annual forum on stormwater fees, funding the greenhouse gases, and VMT, and also microability. And this was this past April 9th. And upcoming for me, SBW May is having a retreat on April 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Any, any other council member reports? Okay, well, with that, we will adjourn at 10:51. Everyone have, have a good rest of your, your evening, what little is left.